Welcome back to Collinwood Field where you've been watching the junior Bannums. These are 12 U kids in an All-Star game where the Columbus All-Stars are in the white and the Cleveland Muni football are in the navy blue. It's seven nothing. Tim Wells and John Good in the house and John, first half, not a bad half, little spicy a couple of times, but other than that, we've seen the ability on both sides of the ball.
Yeah, we have, Tim. It's much expected, that spice that you just spoke of. Both teams trying to be physical, but Columbus All-Star definitely has the upper hand with the seven to nothing lead and just been grinding it out on the ground against these Cleveland All-Stars. More physical, more physical up front. I think that's the best way to put it. As you see the quarterback turns and gives right there to number two for Columbus, Harrison. He picked up enough for a first down and Columbus is on the move as they approach midfield.
So first down and ten.
Giving to the fullback this time, Tim. Quick hit. Did anybody know who had the football for five yards? Here's to on the carry again, but the big guy from the ninety-two all over, excuse me, fifty-two, Christopher Lucius brought him down.
Second down and five. And it looks like the Columbus team said at halftime, hey, we're going to run the football. That's working for it. So Cleveland Muni football, All-Stars need to come up with a stop here. Here's this guy that does all that jitter move again. This time he'll only pick up two. And on the tackle was number eleven, Noah Jenkins Ware from the Glenville Panthers.
Yeah, good job there by K. Brian Davis there on the carry, picking and choosing his way through the, through the traffic, able to pick up about three yards and make it a manageable third down and about two.
Around the forty-seven. You know they're definitely going to go two down territory even if they don't get it here, the way they've been moving the football.
We see these big linemen out here for the Columbus All-Stars out.
Came up and made a stop and that number ten again. Ten and two, man, that's ten. We've been calling his name all day long.
Yeah, that's Antonio Robinson of the Collinwood Cobras. Doing excellent job right here corralling the young man from the Columbus All-Star.
All right, let's reconvene this committee of finance, diversity, equity, and inclusion. Ms. Tilly, can you please read the summary for Office of Budget and Management? Office of Budget and Management?
Apologies. Page two oh four, Office of Budget and Management. Administrator Gregory Cordick. Salaries and wages on page two oh five, twenty twenty-one, unaudited. Five thousand, five hundred twenty-six thousand, six hundred ninety-eight. Twenty twenty-two budgeted, five hundred sixty-four thousand, four hundred seventy-four. Total expenditures also on page two oh five, six hundred ninety-eight thousand, one hundred eighteen. Twenty twenty-two budgeted, seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine. Staffing on page two oh six. Number of employees, December twenty twenty-one, seven. Budgeted for twenty twenty-two, eight. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much, Ms. Tilly. Chief?
To the Chair, Budget Administrator Cordick will make a brief presentation, but first, before he does that, I do want to take a moment and thank all of the staff in his office who put, do all the hard work to put this book together, which is quite a task for a relatively small group. So I'd just like to acknowledge them by name, so put that on the record. So first is Greg Cordick and then his staff, Nicole Gallagher, Stan Kalenda, Joanna Henderson, Tina Magistro, Michelle Reese, and Dan Hinkle. So just thank you to them and all of their work for making this process possible.
Thank you. And you know, the one good thing about budget hearings, Chief, is I'm glad that the public really gets to see all of these hardworking folks that really make this city run. And Mr. Cordick and his team are just great. They've always been great to work with. Ms. Magistro, is she around here? Downstairs. Just crazy about Ms. Magistro. She's just a dynamo. But you got a great team once again. So, Mr. Cordick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Director. So as the Director mentioned, of course, we prepare the Mayor's Estimate and after the Mayor's estimate, we'll prepare the budget book. That'll have all the result of any council reconciliation changes. But really, the most important thing that we do after this budget process wraps up is we do projections for all of the city annually appropriated funds and all of the divisions within those funds. So we, on a line item level, project where we think that we're going to end the year for expenses and for revenue.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cordick. I don't have any questions. Do we have any questions for Mr. Cordick? All right, seeing no questions for Mr. Cordick, we'll move on. Thank you so much. Great job. We have next the Division of Financial Reporting and Control, Division of Information Systems Services, as well as the Telephone Exchange. Ms. Tilly, please read the summary as Ms. Roy joins us. Say it again. Yes, please come up.
Page one ninety-three, Division of Financial Reporting and Control. City Controller Leslie Camargo. Salaries and wages on page one ninety-five, twenty twenty-one, unaudited, one million, seventy-six thousand, two hundred fifty-six. Twenty twenty-two budgeted, one million, three hundred thirty-five thousand, nine hundred twenty. Total expenditures on page one ninety-six, twenty twenty-one, unaudited, one million, four hundred forty-two thousand, eight hundred thirty-six. Twenty twenty-two budgeted, one million, eight hundred nineteen thousand, five hundred and six. Staffing on page one ninety-seven. Number of employees, December twenty twenty-one, fourteen. Budgeted for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Gentile, is Ms. Camargo here or you're going to present on her behalf?
Since you're the councilperson, I'll present.
Okay, please proceed, Mr. Gentile.
Thank you, Chair. Financial Reporting and Control is a division and I'm going to highlight some of the areas we work on. We do cash reconciliation for the city on our bank account. We do general accounting for the city, so if there's something that doesn't fit in a category, we record it, payroll, benefits, property tax, et cetera. We monitor proprietary funds and capital project fund spend. We monitor special revenue activity for the city of Cleveland. We also are in charge of the accounting system, which is Advantage. We provide security and access to that, to that system. In twenty twenty-one, we upgraded the Advantage system to the current level. So on our financial system, we're up to the current level of release of that software. We also are tasked with preparing monthly reports as well as the annual report. And we work with internal audit to coordinate the external audit performed by our auditors from outside. I'm ready to take questions.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gentile. I have Councilman Conwell.
Real quick, sitting back, you know, I've been to all the budget meetings and listening to it and even go home dreaming budget, man, which is cool being. Yeah, so I think that what we're missing the mark, and I have to put this out here, Mr. President, you know, it's just like, you know, you want to, if you, you got to think ahead and you have to plan ahead. So we wait every year and annually to do this budget, to do budget, and then we find out where issues and concerns are, and then we put down, we reconcile, right? I think that in September, we should at least have a review. And then before we do the fund transfers, we know where we're at, we know how the taxes are coming in, the fines and the fees. Why wait to the chair, to the controller, until February to discuss this? I think the way you stay on top of it is to three quarters in, that's how you kind of know, and then we do reviews.
Yeah, to the Chair of the Council, we will look into additional briefings prior to year-end and prior to the trans ordnance in the future.
All right, and then put me back on, but you really didn't answer me, and as well as to the President, you got to do this, man, especially in this time and date. Third quarter CFO, that's when you kind of know where everything is at. And so why wait? It's just like, you know, you're planning, you're doing contingency planning, critical path analysis, all that, we'll know in that third quarter. Why wait until the final, the final hit? And then you say, we're in trouble. Or this is what we're moving to.
Through the Chair to the Councilman. I think a lot of that work does happen in the department between OBM and FRC in terms of monitoring sort of in real-time revenues, expenses, and highlighting any issues that arise. I think when it comes to sort of preparing something like this, or even a precursor to this, there is, there's just a lot of time needed to put something like this together. And so, you know, if there are ways that we can provide more real-time information via, you know, additional hearings about sort of the current position of the city financially throughout the year, we, of course, would be happy to do that so that you and the rest of this body has a, as clear a picture and understanding of the finances of the city as you need.
And you know what? It's like this to me. You're doing a project, right? And I always talk about milestones. You have to hit a certain milestone. You know that in September, we should be here. However, before you hit milestones, there's indicators, we call them dependencies. This is dependent on that, this is dependent on this, this is dependent on that. But if you're not hitting your dependencies before you get to your milestones, then we should be meeting and you guys should be giving us, because you said you already meet, quarterly reviews. Just quarterly, this is where we're at, Council President, this is where we're at, Council members, because we are the funders. We are the funders and we should know. Instead of waiting until in the end, those dependencies, that's what they're called, would tell you even before the milestones, you're not going in the right direction. Because sometime, just like policy, things can shift on you. It could shift on you. Other things and other policies from downstate can change things like dealing with taxes. And they start collecting taxes. Or people who are not working in the city of Cleveland, they demand for some of their tax dollars to go back to them. And so how would this make, because right now, a budget is really an assumption. We assume this is going to happen because indicators and dependencies tell us this is going to happen. So that's why I'm pushing for like third quarters. You don't have to give us all of this. You can just show us that certain things, there's issues and concerns, and we're not hitting our milestones.
Through the Chair to the Councilman, we're happy to provide sort of snapshots in time of tax collections and put that in historical perspective so that you have a clear understanding of what that historically will mean by the end of the year.
Yeah. And let me say this. So, and you know, I do dream about budget, however, I dream about music too. So I get up in the middle of the morning, I might write me some tunes, just like policy. I might think about policy, get up in the morning, write the policy, or I might get up and hop on my drums, or, you know, in the basement, not wicking Ivana. You know, it's a lot of things just go through your mind, go through your mind now. So I'm there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman.
All right.
Councilman Joe Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The distinguished lady, are you the acting city controller?
I'm sorry, to the Chair, no. Council President asked me to sit up here. I'm with, I'm the Commissioner of IT.
She's next.
I'm next. And he asked me to come to the table.
I see. And then there are controllers, she wasn't able to be here.
To the Chair of the Councilperson, because the finance director is now on board, I'm, excuse me, I'm the city controller. At the time the book was printed, that's my assistant.
Oh, okay.
So, but now I'm resumed the position of controller now that the finance director's aboard.
Okay. And Mr. Chairman, to the Director, out of your department, you're more or less a, another layer to monitor and make sure that in all of our departments, everything is accurate as well as reported as it should be based upon, I would, and you can correct me, I presume, accounting guidelines.
Yeah, to the Chair of the Councilmember, yes, we are the reporting entity. So we do the annual reports, we present monthly reports in accordance with general accepted accounting principles and auditing standards.
And that's, and that's what we usually get from time to time in the council, reporting coming back from the, all the funds. And is this where we talk about a breakdown of the finances that we collected, where we are in a snapshot, or where we will be based upon collections?
To the Chair of the Councilperson, I believe you're talking about the finance director's report that gets sent off monthly and that gives the percentage of breakout. That's done, that's done through administration and OBM.
Okay, so it's not in this area?
To the Councilperson, to the Chair, I mean, to the, to the Councilperson, no, that's not, that's not done by the.
So, Mr. Chairman, but you do handle the accounting for all the grants?
Chair of the Councilperson, we monitor all the grants, how each individual apartment has grant people. We review it, we look at it, and we, we compile the federal schedule and we make sure that it gets audited by the independent auditor.
And, Mr. Chairman, do we have an accounting for how many grants came in, in the various different departments? Would your department have that data and information?
Chair of the Councilperson, yes, we could put that, we could put that together.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Does Ms. Tilly, you have that? Is it, what is, what those grants are on an annual basis? And thank you, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Gentile. And then also, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Gentile, your department also handles the capital projects too?
To the Chair of the Councilperson, we monitor those. So we look at the accounting. We assist the budget office, we work hand in hand with them, you know, to make sure they're budgeted, make sure they're posting appropriately, the reimbursements are there for like, but like we have capital grants and some, we make sure the department's drawing down the money. So we monitor that activity.
And, Mr. Chairman, do you have an availability of what, where those, those projects that you are monitoring? Do you have a listing of those, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Gentile?
To the Chair, to the, through the Chair to the Councilperson, yes, there's.
Mr. Chairman, I would request if we could get a listing.
Thank you, Ms. Tilly. Did you get that request?
And, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Capital projects being monitored by the controller.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Gentile, to your department, thank you for the work you do for us.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Conwell would like to go back on for a point.
Your user departments, and you have down here where activities, personnel and accounting issues. So that's telling me, like, you have this book to the Chair, to the Controller, this is the finance, but you have another accounting book where you have the accounting numbers and how the dollars, for example, the user departments have fund accounts. And you're doing accounting with them. And so is that the budgeting department is over that? Is that correct?
To the Chair of the Councilperson, the budget books here is done by the budget, by the budget office. My office prepares the annual financial report.
Yes.
That's what gets examined by the external auditor and we get an opinion on those financials that they're fairly stated in accordance with all accounting guidelines, auditing guidelines. So my office is responsible for preparing that report. It's online. We post it online on the city's website. I have copies in my office. We're currently work, we're currently working on last year's report right now, and the auditors are on site working on auditing it right now.
Okay. That was the only point. Interesting, I just wanted to talk, I kind of knew the answer, but I wanted to just, because you're the expert, get an expert opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Casey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, to the comptroller, or the CFO, just real quick, your travel on page one ninety-five has increased for, wow, quite a bit over the last three years?
Yeah, to the Chair of the Councilperson, a couple of things happened. Of course, during the pandemic, we weren't traveling like we normally would travel. Second thing that we try to do is we try to cultivate CPAs. So we have accountants that come in as staff accountants. We train them, hoping a lot of them will try to get their certified public accountant to the state of Ohio. Happy to report, we now have a total of four, including, including me. With that comes continuing education, so they have to keep up on CPEs annually. So we do fund those in here. And now that we have four, in the past, we haven't had that many. So between having a total of four CPAs on staff, as well as getting back to more travel and training than we have in the past several years because of the pandemic, that's the increase.
And those individuals that we're bringing in training, they're our own people, or they're, they're potentially going to be future employees? Or CPPAs for the city or whatever?
To the Chair, to the Councilperson, no, these are city employees. So they're accountants in my office that have taken the state certification test and passed the test.
All right. And then one other question, Mr. Chairman, to either one of the three that can answer, answer this question. And all my years on council, I've never seen a decrease in the city budget, right? Every year, it seems to increase by some amount, which I think is just natural. This budget here, our revenues to expenditures is the biggest gap I've ever seen being on council. You guys prepared the book, and I can't really so much say this administration, because our CFO wasn't here when it was done and neither was this administration. So to whomever, this budget that you presented today, is it sustainable over time, right? I mean, if it continues, we know that you're, the fifty-six million is the gap. We know that you're looking to fill that gap with the hundred and twenty-one million dollar rollover, but that's not always going to be there, right? If this budget was to stay par for its course as it was presented to us. So, Mr. Chairman, to the CFO, you know, can you, I mean, you could see how we're looking at it, right? Can you touch on this budget, not transitional throughout time, but this budget here today? Thank you.
So through the Chair to the Councilman, as a general matter, looking into the future, we have to make the revenues and expenses come together. And so there are a variety of ways we can do that. Of course, our single largest expense is people. I think it's approximately seventy percent of our cost is people. A lot of that is in these budgeted positions. And we will have to do a lot of hard work and real assessment of operations within City Hall, organizational structures within City Hall, process that can be made more efficient and may be done electronically, done with fewer people, to bring the cost side of the equation closer to today's revenues. Now, I would note that I don't, I don't think it would be responsible or the best approach to only go at this problem through costs. As we talked about a little bit ago, you know, the taxes, the consumption-based taxes that we collect through hotels, admissions, et cetera, are down significantly from what they were in twenty nineteen. If those rebound in a, not what, I don't want to say post-COVID world, but a world with COVID as just sort of an everyday fact of life, then that provides a whole lot of upward pressure to, that adds, you know, right, last year we were down, I think, seventeen million dollars from our twenty nineteen collections. And if you look over time, the sort of trend of those collections, just like our income tax collections, was going up year over year. So I think it's going to be a combination of absolutely assessing the organization and making sure that it is right-sized to provide high-quality services in a fiscally responsible way, but also looking at the revenue side and anticipating some revenue increases as people start going back to living life the way we did before March, early March of twenty twenty. So I don't know if that answers exactly the question. I would say, in short, this budget, we, the ARPA funds will go away, and then we will have a legal obligation under state law to present a balanced budget, a structurally balanced budget. And so one, one thought that I've been operating under is that this ARPA money, we should not use it as an excuse to run inflated operations, but it does give us an opportunity to be really intelligent and responsible in how we go about reshaping City Hall. So instead of coming in and saying, okay, we just, well, we got to get rid of four hundred headcount, and just indiscriminately wiping those off the table, we can be a lot more thoughtful in how we do that because we have this lifeline that has been given to us.
Well, you know, and I've been, Mr. Chairman, I've been, I've been preaching it now for, you know, for eight days, right? This budget scares me because of that shortfall and, you know, and I'm not so much thinking of this one, but what are we going to do if we maintain this level? And we're putting a lot of hope in, I mean, even Major League Baseball, we've already lost six games, right? And it doesn't sound like much, but that's six games worth of revenue. And say what you will, that's still revenue generating dollars to the city. And we've already lost. And we've already lost six home games just because of the lockout. So we're putting our faith and trust in a lot of could be's, right, as opposed to, to, to this. And knowing that we've got to ratify those 30 union contracts, you know, is even scarier in itself, that if we're this far apart in our expenditures to revenues, knowing that the expenditures only go up, and hoping that the city comes back financially to where it was pre-COVID, is, that's a pretty big leap of faith. So the city of Cleveland and this council have a lot of faith in your hands, you know, because this is not going to be an easy decision for this side to pass the budget the way it's presented. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Richard Starr.
Chair to that point?
I've got Councilman Starr.
No, thank you, Chair. And thank you, colleague, Councilman Casey. And just to the Director of Finance, just for my point of clarification and understanding, with this overflow cash of about $56 million, which we, as council members, been talking for like the last two weeks about. And as when we're thinking about budgeting, you know, budgeting is basically where you tell your money what to go do. So what, what I'm trying to get understanding is basically upon from the chair to the director is sustainability within a budget like this. You know, we go up to a $56 million increase, and we basically saying that we're taking money from the, from the bank, from the piggy bank. What happened when that piggy bank goes short, and we don't have that type of funding? I'm just trying to see throughout this budget, is there a way to generate more revenue to be able to sustain this type of budget? Because you don't want to look up, and we'd be the council body that bankrupt the city. And what I mean by that is, yes, administration take their slack, but the council members had a chance to review a budget. And what we said, day one, since we started budgeting through our leadership, as well as our council president and his leadership, was this is our budget now. To be able to vet it, to make sure we have funding in right departments, so we can do great work in the city. So my question, or my point of reference and question to the chair, to the director is, how?
So through the chair, to the councilman, that is the, I should say, $56 million question? I, I'll say first, the mayor and I are committed to bringing structural balance to the budget over time. That is unequivocal, and it is an absolute goal of ours to be able to present to this body a balanced budget, a structurally balanced budget as soon as we possibly can. To do that, I think, and this partly answers Councilman Casey's question as well, is I don't think that there's going to be any single approach that allows us to do that. So what I mean is, I don't think we can just cut costs to do that. We also can't just rely on revenue increases. It's going to have to be a combination of the two. And I think what the work, the work that lies ahead of us on the administration side, on the council side, and then collectively, is the best way, the best balance between the two. So where, where do we have positions or functions of the city that we don't need them? And so how can we cut the cost side of the equation there? But also, where are there ways that we can, we can reasonably rely on sort of natural increased revenue through, you know, some of the consumption taxes that have gone down primarily due to COVID and sort of the restrictions and the caution with which people have been living their lives? But also, how can we imagine, develop new revenue sources, reassess existing revenue sources, you know, all the, all the assessments that we, or fees that we charge for licenses and the like, EMS, which has been a topic of conversation over the last couple of weeks? I think not one of those efforts is going to be the silver bullet, but there will, there will take sort of a collective approach to come at the problem from every angle we possibly can.
Thank you, Kelton.
Yep. And just one more point. I understand, chair to the director, I understand what you're saying, but you got to also make sure we understand the reality. Like, when I see an increase that large and with one cycle, one year, on a budget is alarming first, but then second, chair to the director is, we talked about cutting costs and being a balance. We have a lot of positions throughout this last week and a half that I see is just, that could be cut. And what I mean is not necessarily saying we're looking to take away jobs, but understanding we have assistants and additional assistants, and then we have a secretary. I don't know the difference between a reception or assistant nowadays, because there's a lot of funding. And then when I talk about costs and being efficient, even when we go back to the public safety discussion, chair to the finance director, I mentioned in safety that we have the Sergeant of Police 57, and they're telling me they're managing only six officers. That's their capacity. Like, how are we being efficient or being effective when we say we need one adult to manage six other adults? Basically, like, we don't have no, we have all this micromanagement in which we're wasting a lot of money just to get that roles done. When you look at the overall budget, when you look at what's coming out of the general fund and how much goes to public safety, we spent almost 300 some million dollars. That's just a rough estimate, just to make sure the viewers at home get a understanding of what I'm saying, of a $704 million budget. Something that me and my colleagues would all possibly agree on, if I may say, is we want to feel safe through our neighborhood. Residents in our neighborhoods want to be feel safe, but we need a budget that matches that same safety. If we just overspending in one department, and we still not getting results, what is the performance measurements? What is, what is being implemented? Why are we telling, we're going to increase the budget of $56 million when we're not trying to take away or cut costs in departments that we probably don't have a need in? That's my just, my just whole overall understanding of budgeting and understanding of cost, cash flow, revenue, line items, however many terminology you want to get break down. But we can't keep pulling from the, from the piggy bank, and we ain't depositing nothing into the bank.
So Chief, if you could speak specifically to how the administration plans to bring efficiencies to city government, to cut costs, so that the imbalance doesn't?
Through the, through the chair to the councilman and the council, what, it's hard to say specifically exactly how we're going to attack this, other than each department is going to be tasked with doing a very detailed and rigorous assessment of their operation, of their organizational structure, their management structures, the services that they provide, and assess candidly and responsibly how it's working and where, where we're putting, making, to make sure that where we're putting resources is where they need to be. And if we're putting resources where they shouldn't be, where they're not necessary, then we're going to have to have really difficult conversations at this table about how to address that. What, what I think on the administration side, since, you know, not, this isn't an excuse, it's just the reality, we're, we just got here. And so we are going through the exercise now of learning how the, how City Hall runs, how the departments run, the divisions within them, where we need to invest resources, and where we maybe need to take resources away because they, maybe it doesn't work, maybe we don't need to provide the services that are being provided there, for whatever reason. But this is an urgent problem, and I, and, you know, I truly do believe that. We need to solve it. And it's a problem that has been building over time. So, you know, last year's budget, for example, at the end of the year, the actual budget was about $680 million, which was more than was budgeted through the budget process after the transfer order. And so, you know, there's just a built up need to assess the organization and really bring it in line with what our resources permit it to be.
Thank you.
No, I yield, Chair, but just, just a point of clarification. I yield. But thank you, but I'm just interested in seeing, since we both just got here, what you could create and what you could come up. I know it ain't 50 million. This is, says this is a large lot of money. That's awesome.
Thank you, Councilman. And before I go to Councilman Harsh, I would just note, too, that, a couple of things. One, council controls the budget. So if we want to cut items, if we want to remove positions, we have the authority under the charter to do that. Number two, I would just say to keep in mind, too, now this does not, you know, there's a structurally balanced budget, and then there's an actually balanced budget. You know, a couple of things. One, the 56 million is the loss and increase combined. Is that correct? So our loss in revenue, our deficit is 56 million, which includes a loss of revenue projected. So it's not a $56 million increase over your budget last year?
To the chair, that is correct. So the actual budget at the end of the year last year, actual expenditures by the city was approximately $680 million.
Right.
This, this proposed budget stands at about $704 million.
Right. So and then the other point, too, would be that I would be shocked if they, if the ministry, how many vacant positions, 800 some?
690.
Total?
To the chair. So we carried over from the end, from 2021 budget year into 2022, 690 budgeted but vacant positions. There are 819 total vacant positions.
Yeah, so 819 total vacant. If they filled half of those this year, I would be shocked. So when you don't fill the positions, not that you're not trying to, but just the reality of the environment we're in, you don't pay for those positions. So if you budget that, but only fit, you know, fill half, all of that money will roll over into the following year. So that's just something to keep in. I'm not saying you plan to do that, you plan to fill every job you can, but the reality, if any of the history is, tells us, you're not going to be able to do that. Councilman Harsh.
Thank you, Chairman. It makes me think a lot about what Councilman Conwell just said, that a budget's an assumption. To me, it sounds more like this is a wish or dream. So through the chair, if we were to backfill those 690 positions, and the budgeted amounts next year turn into payroll obligations, is it the opinion of the, of the administration that we can find a 7% or 8% savings in the 25% of the budget that isn't payroll?
So through the chair to the councilman, I would be shocked if we could find that kind of savings from non-payroll, non-salary benefit expenses.
So through the chairs, is this assumption that we're going to have layoffs next year if we backfill all these positions?
So through, through the chair to the councilman, I would be very surprised when we come back to this council throughout the year, that the vacant positions that we seek to fill equals the 690 that is in this book. And that's the, that's sort of the tension here, is that we, there are positions that were budgeted last year that were not filled. We, which creates this structurally unbalanced budget, right? What we need to do as the administration is to take the time needed to intelligently assess of those 690, which do we need, which do we not need? And, and so that's kind of, that's what's happening here. So, you know, there could, of course, we could just say, well, they existed at the end of 2021, we're not filled. We could just slice them off the table. That would be more brute force than I think we need to be, because we have this, this flexibility, this sort of one-time flexibility to be able to take the time needed to really make intelligent choices about how to structure City Hall with the carryover funds. So we can balance the budget and retain the flexibility we need to really make these assessments.
So to Mr. Chair to Councilman Conwell's point, it seems more like this budget might be less of an assumption, more of a whole lot of wiggle room, to give those departments the space that they might need to hire or not, depending on, on their needs. And this budget might just be a extra, extra helpings, and then what, what isn't eaten can be returned. And we'll have to be very, very careful next year about what goes on the plate, because this is just, I mean, unless you're going to, this seems like a recipe, Mr. Chairman, or Chair, to, to, to set up a whole bunch of people for layoffs. If you're going to be sincerely, come here and tell, tell us that we want to backhire 690, hire another 129 on top of that, plus 180 police officers, yeah, we're going to come back here and somehow deal with a 7%, 8% budget shortfall next year. And that's being a little bit generous to increased revenue, all within the 25% of expenses that are not payroll. I would hate to see this body in a situation of having to look at layoffs next year. That would be, that would be atrocious.
One second, one second. Councilman, I think your point, too, gets to the great philosopher Brian Casey's point of, you know, budgeting, you know, the idea of inflating a budget to allow for wiggle room, right, or allow to not rehire to restructure versus, and correct me if I'm wrong, Councilman Casey, Councilman Casey's saying, should we reduce numbers to get more towards what is more realistic number versus providing a lot of wiggle room within a budget to operate? Councilman Casey, is that generally what you've been saying for two weeks?
So, so, yeah, I mean, it's basically living in reality, right, as opposed to a fantasy of hope and dreams of what could possibly happen, right? As opposed to, you know, we're here today, right? And we got to live within our means today. We can't live on, you know, hoping that we're going to get a raise or have an influx later on. But, you know, I will concur with you, Councilman McCormick, great philosopher. I mean, that's, I've never heard that. Kudos, kudos to you, Mr. Chairman.
And then I would imagine, Councilman Harsh, the administration has been advocating that they are brand new, and they want the time to figure out where things should be and what departments should be what and all that. So it's almost a balance of those two perspectives. But go ahead, Councilman Harsh.
Chairman, I compared you all to Aristotle in my, in my swearing in ceremony speech. So I don't know that why, that's not the first time you've been called a great philosopher, Councilman Casey.
All right. Hold on. I've got a point here.
Thanks, Chairman. I'm sorry to get perspective of what we're doing here. What we're doing here, Mr. Chairman, just give me.
And I have to move this budget, so this has got to wrap. Chief, like, 30 seconds matters.
Through the, through the chair to the councilman, the, under, we do not intend to be at the table next year talking about layoffs. That is, I have to be crystal clear about that.
Thank you. Councilman Conwell, point, quick point.
A quick point. Let me say this. I like Mayor Bibb a lot. Extremely bright young man. But what you guys can't say, and you shouldn't say it, that you just got here, it's a relay race. You have the baton now. The baton has been handed to you, so you got to execute on the baton and look at lessons learned, and you have to move forward with that. You know, I wouldn't hire so many people. What I would do is, and through the controller, you sit down, you talk with the unions, and you look at job enlargements. If I have a worker working here, and I need to have a job load or workload done, can I cross-train that worker? Can I do job enlargements? You see what I'm saying? That way I could control my cost of labor. And you got to control medical, you got to control overtime, sick time, all of that. You bring on more workers, we're bringing in more dollars. We know that next year, we're going to have an issue. So I wouldn't just jump to hire 600 workers. It would destroy my budget. Maybe 250 or 300, and we cross-train, and we do job enlargements.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilperson Spencer.
Can he answer?
I, we cannot rule this into tomorrow. So I, point taken, Councilman. Councilperson Spencer.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a factual point of, of reference on this. If council authorizes the budget, are the individual departments and divisions then authorized to make the hires that are in the book? In other words, that's kind of the balance, right? So I'm, I'm more of this thinking of do not authorize the full, the full amount, right, the full 690 vacant positions, because if I'm the division or the department, and we approve the budget as is, I'm going to say, I'm good to go, right? Or what's the factual, what is the procedure?
So the short answer, your first question's yes. If we authorize this budget, they are permitted to hire with what's in this budget. And I think that's going to be the balance between giving them grace, as our council colleague here says, to kind of figure things out, while us saying that's too much grace.
That's right.
Right? Is finding that balance.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. I am moving on to, I am moving on. I'm sorry. This, this philosophical conversation has gone on way too long, and I need to be responsible with our time. So I'm moving into information system services. Ms. Tilly, please read information system services.
Page 198, Information System Services, Commissioner Kimberly Roy Wilson. Salaries and wages on page 199. 2021 unaudited, $2,503,000. 2021 unaudited, $2,053,739. 2022 budgeted, $2,690,813. Total expenditures on page 200. 2021 unaudited, $7,760,123. 2022 budgeted, $11,894,154. Staffing on page 203. Number of employees in December 2021, 29. Budgeted for 2022, 40. Mr. Chairman.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. Any opening statements?
Yes. It is, good afternoon, Mr. Chair. It is my honor to sit here before you and provide you with an overview of duties and responsibilities of the Division of Information Technology and Services. My team is comprised of network engineers, security officers, telecom, system, software, budget analysts, telephone operators, program and project managers, and three assistant commissioners who oversee infrastructure, applications, and public safety systems. Additionally, the Division of IT provides leadership, direction, and support to embedded technical staff that are physically located in some of the departments in the general fund. My team is also responsible for the following areas with regard to maintenance, support, and implementation, networking, security, telecommunications, applications, mobility, infrastructure, safety systems, asset inventory, business analysis, vendor contract management, fiscal management, project management. We are also responsible for the property management of the building of 205 HVAC Systems, Transformers, UPS, exterior building facade as well. Finally, I would like to express my sincere gratitude to my technology team who are dedicated, reliable, responsible, and incredibly skilled at what they do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right. So we see a, yeah, one second, let me get down here. All right. So you've got an increase of five within your budget, is that correct?
Six.
Six, I'm sorry. 35 to 40 total division?
35, well, it should be six, five.
Five, okay. I want to make sure I'm reading this right. Okay. And the majority, so you've got a network analyst. Can you just speak to those increases and why they're necessary for the team?
Absolutely. As I just stated, the type, the position that I have currently in my operation, technically, they're like one person per area. And we actually are understaffed. So we're looking to increase our staff so that I have, one, a backup, two, cross-training, and not to overburden my staff, my existing staff that I currently have. So right now, we're asking for an additional security officer. We're asking for additional network manager. We're asking for additional program and project manager and business analyst.
Okay, thank you. And when you say a security officer, that's a.
Cyber security.
Cyber security, thank you. You got, took the word from me, appreciate that. And then Commissioner, did your department oversee the city website?
Yes.
Can you provide a quick update on that, updating our city website? I know it's been in the works for a while.
It has been in the works, Mr. Chair. And currently, we are working with the mayor's office of communications. They are reviewing the existing project that we had undertaken last year. They're working with our vendors now to review the scope. And we are looking to put, upgrade the new website this year.
Oh, it's, I was going to ask for a timeline. So that is a this-year thing?
Absolutely, it is.
Wonderful. I appreciate that. And I'd ask that you engage council as we go through that process as well. Okay, I've got Councilman Brian Casey. I've got you on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, on page 200, under maintenance, for maintenance building, there's quite an increase in this year's budgeted. Can you just touch on the maintenance building?
Commissioner?
On page 200, under maintenance.
So there is a six, I'm sorry. Mr. Chair to the councilperson, there's a couple of areas here. Under computer hardware maintenance, there is $600,000. That's our security ELA maintenance contract with Cisco. And then that's a three-year contract that we have in place and we're budgeted to pay for three years upfront. And then the 4.4 million. The majority of that is a $1.2 million contract with CGI, which last year, as the controller spoke to, we upgraded the financial management system. We moved it to the cloud. And 1.2 million is the cost for hosting, maintenance, and licensing.
All right. And then the, the fourth line under there, because that was all computer stuff, the maintenance building stuff, is that, can you just explain what that is?
As I stated earlier in our, my introduction, we are responsible for the building maintenance, HVAC Systems, Transformers. So we are going to be doing a, also the facade. We have building repair that needs to be done with our bricks on the outside of the building, painting, and there's some things that we need to do also with the Transformers.
And then, Mr. Chairman, the Commissioner, where are you, where are you located?
205, Mr. Chair to the, to the councilperson, 205 St. Clair, across the street from the Justice Center.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman to the Commissioner, we don't own 205 St. Clair, do we?
Yes, we do.
Okay, we do own, we do own it. Again, this is, you know, we see maintenance, but we don't see rent, right? That was, that's what it was. So it's good that we, to know that we own it. And then if we can just touch one on your expenditures, since 2019 to budgeted 2020 has more than doubled, right? So is that just because we're doing a lot of upgrading to computer systems and, I guess, keeping up with the times?
Mr. Chair to the councilperson, absolutely. We're constantly increasing our data systems, which means we have to increase our maintenance and support. Along with that, our network fiber optic, fiber optic network footprint has increased tremendously with the implementation of the cameras across the city. We also have to add fiber. We had to upgrade fiber in our recreation centers. We have to upgrade fiber at our, at, with CPP and our data, with our substations. So all of the upgrades that we're doing with our fiber optic network along with building in redundancy for our fiber optic network so that if a single path is cut, we have alternate paths and that the, we don't lose connectivity, if you will.
And then one final question, Mr. Chairman, to either the Commissioner or the CFO or our comptours. Do you anticipate this cost continuing on an increase at this level in future years?
I do, Mr. Chair to the councilperson, I do anticipate it increasing. At the level which is increasing, probably so because we're looking at a cloud migration strategy. So we're looking at moving most of our systems to the cloud as well. So you will see an increase in cost in cloud. You will see a continued increase in cost in our fiber optic network as well. So I do intend, and then of course, and on the back end of that, we need resources to support that environment.
Right. And Mr. Chairman, and I know you're the technology and the street smart, you know, person. This is something that we should probably start keeping a very good eye, our keen eye on, seeing how that has increased. I don't think, I think this was probably on everybody's back burner. But if we could, we probably need to keep an eye on this to make sure that, how do we stay fiscally responsible but keep up with the times as well, right? This is going to be one of those departments where, you know, I think we need to, to keep an eye on just in the future so that us keeping up with technology doesn't end up breaking the bank while we're doing it as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And Councilman, if I can add on to that, I would add a third piece to that and is how can we save money through technology as well? So, okay. Thank you, Councilman Casey. Councilman Kevin Conwell.
Commissioner.
Carrie.
Quick question to the chair. What is your, your background is what, Commissioner?
Commissioner?
Mr. Chair to the councilperson, I've been with the city for 25 years. I graduated from John Carroll University. And I started out with the municipal court back in 1997 as a computer engineer, working with Mayor, I'm not Mayor, but Judge Perk. So I started out as a network engineer, telecom analyst, a project manager, and now as Commissioner of Technology.
Technology. And, and thank you very much to the chair, to Commissioner Wilson. And Councilmember Brian Casey mentioned us keeping up with you. You, you have the $50,000 down on page 199. And I think you might have to reiterate that with me. That's for tuition and registration fees. You plan to do what?
Mr. Chair to the councilperson, similar to what the controller has stated, in 2019 and 2020, we didn't do, really during the pandemic, 2020 and 2021, we didn't do much travel or, or training during those years. We are now ramping back up. With regard to security, we have to have certifications in place for our security analysts. We have to have certifications in place for our network engineers. So the cost to maintain their certificates, the cost for training across all the technology platform is, we're looking to ramp back up.
You have $50,000. And you have down here also $10,000. Okay, that's correlated to it.
Yes.
$50,000 correlated.
Yes.
And so you guys, I know in technology, because it's always shifting and it changes and it moves, I'm not a technology guy, but, you know, I read plans. You put together, have you put together your technology strategic plan? Through the chair.
Through the chair, Mr. Counsel, Mr. To the councilperson, yes. We have put together one previously with the former CIO, and I'm looking forward to putting one together with the current, with the new CIO that's coming on board.
Yeah, so who do you plan to have? Because you could share that with council. That's how, and I'm, we're not being nosy, but we are the funders. When Councilmember Brian Casey mentioned us monitoring the situation, we can monitor it through your technology plan, your strategic plan. Is it, you looking to do a five-year, one, three-year, five-year, or what? Before you answer, through the chair.
Mr. Chair to the councilperson, we typically do a three-year strategic plan.
Yeah, I know, yeah, yeah, yeah. So you could share that with us. So when are you, when are you thinking about the implementation of it? You're building your case now to do it. And then when you start doing your implementation, when?
When, Mr. Chair to the councilperson, I am looking to work with the new CIO who's expected to come on board to start that process.
And to start that process, you got, you have a date? Or you guys still just, you still building your case right now?
Mr. Chair to the councilperson, we're still building our case right now.
You plan to execute it this year, through the chair?
Mr. Chair to the councilperson, yes.
Your assumption, we when?
Mr. Chair to the councilperson, as soon as the new CIO comes on board, we plan to hit the ground running.
And you know what? What we'd like to do, write this down for me, do me a favor, Commissioner. Give us your scorecard. Give us your strategic plan, what you plan to do. You know, like building the case, the implementation of it, your planning, your execution of your, of it, your monitoring and controlling, all of those things that will fall right in there, your strategic plan. That's how we'll monitor what's going on. It'd be an interesting thing to look at, as well as the scorecard of it.
Mr. Chair to the councilperson, yes, we will.
Okay. And, and your SWOT analysis as well. But we want trends, we want strength, weaknesses, opportunities, trends, and threats. The threats, because you need security, you just told me that. So when you narrated it to me, it just went through my whole mind.
Mr. Chair to the councilperson, yes, we will.
You're doing all of their business? They can put me on. That's my background.
You just made that up. I had you on three times last session.
I, we need that, that scorecard, and as well as I knew that you were going to put together your strategic plan for technology. And we need that. And I think you'll probably do it in this, this summer, in June. Who are you planning to help you out with it? When you go out to put it together? Through the chair.
Mr. Chair to the council, I'm sorry, I didn't get your, I didn't get your statement.
Your consultant will be who, through the chair?
Mr. Chair to the council. Mr. Chair to the councilperson, I will be working with the new chief information officer to put together a strategic plan.
Then we'll have it. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And you know that technology, incorporating technology into city services to provide better services for our resident is my baby. So we will welcome the Commissioner, when the new CIO comes on board, we'll welcome them back to committee to brief us on that. So, Chief, do we have a timeline on the new CIO onboarding or being announced?
I'd have to double-check on that.
Thank you. Councilmember Jenny Spencer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm glad the, the CIO or CTO or CIO position came up. Through the chair, has the city had that position historically? Or is this the first time we're going to have this position?
The chair, the councilwoman, the city has had it previously. The, the person that was in the chief technology officer left employment late last year.
Okay. So this is, or I got that. Through the chair to the Commissioner, has there been a technology needs assessment conducted for the various departments and divisions within the city? Or has each division or department conducted one?
Mr. Chair to the councilwoman, typically, we go through the department to, not across the board, but typically, we go to the department to identify their technical needs. And we identify where their weaknesses are and how they would like to improve their efficiencies. And we do identify technologies to enhance what they do. Additionally, we have business systems such as Asella, CityWorks, where we actually expand those business systems across each department where applicable. So we also work with their departments to do a, conduct a business assessment, a business analysis review, so we can implement those systems as well.
Thank you. And through the chair to the Commissioner, how often are those, those needs assessments conducted? In other words, in other words, after what kind of cycle, what an individual division have a new assessment completed?
Annual, Mr. Chair to the councilwoman, annually.
Okay. Thank you. And then through the chair to the Commissioner, in your, in your estimation, do individual city employees at this point have the technology they need to do their jobs?
Mr. Chair to the councilwoman, in my estimation, they have what they need to do their jobs, and we can always scale. So we're looking, as technology increases, as the demand for efficiencies and operational improvements increase, we scale accordingly to make sure they have the tools they need. Because it's not a static environment, it's dynamic. And so as their operations improve, we are there to help improve them with technology as well.
Thank you. And, um, in your, through the chair, in your estimation, Commissioner, what would be the, the major gaps at this point that employees have expressed in terms of not having what they need to do their jobs? Technology-wise?
Where can we improve, Commissioner?
Where can we improve?
Mr. Chair to the councilwoman, I think the biggest request is the ability to remote, work remotely. And not so much remotely from home, but to work in the, in the community with having technology. So our ability to provide them with the devices, equipment, and the technology they need to be able to real-time do their work is a, is a huge demand. And our, on the other end of that, our ability to ensure that there is security in place for them to do their work while they are in the community is where we are looking to improve.
So no more paper and highlighters for the snowplows?
And no more sitting, sitting at your desk all day.
Yeah.
Yes, right.
All right. I conclude my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Spencer. Ms. Tilly, will you please read Telephone Exchange?
Page 470, Telephone Exchange. Salaries and wages, 2021 unaudited, $1,068,194. 2022 budgeted, $1,172,306. Total expenditures on page 471. 2021 unaudited, $11,720,398. 2022 budgeted, $15,668,743. Salaries and wages on page 472. Number of employees, December 2021, 16. Budgeted 2022, 19. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chief. Will Commissioner be presenting on this as well? Commissioner, take it away.
Mr. Chair, I'm open for questions.
Okay. Well, just give us a quick overview of what this is, and then we'll go to questions. Okay, well, give us a quick overview of what this is, and then we'll go to questions.
Mr. Chair and councilmembers, the telecommunications section provides cabling, we provide the VoIP environment, our telephone environment, we also provide the mobility of the cellphones that you have as well.
So phones, cellphones, cabling, all of that within the city government as a whole?
Yes.
Thank you. And Commissioner, 311 is not under this?
Mr. Chair, yes, 311 is under this.
So the salary, the, the employees of 311 are in this division as well?
Yes.
Okay, and I, I will note too, for members, Chief Puente responded, I think to everybody, but they're gonna help get our EA, anyone that wants you or your EA to be able to enter into 311, they're gonna work on that and have trainings for councilmembers, EAs as well, so that you can more directly input issues that your residents are calling in on. So I just wanted to, I think everybody's on that email, but just so that we observe that as well. Commissioner and Chief, I know that the mayor has talked a lot about increasing the capacity of 311. Do we have anything to talk about at this time, or is it more of, we know we want to do it, and we're gonna figure out how to do it?
Mr. Chair, to the council, Mr. Chair, to the council, yes, we are working with the mayor's office to increase capacity. And what that means is, as we begin to expand the call-taking for the city, currently, we're call, we're providing call-taking by way of complaints for certain departments. So as we begin to expand our call-taking for complaints across the city, is where we're gonna need more resources to answer those calls. So we're working with the mayor's office to identify how that's going to happen. Along with that, the mayor's office is also reviewing the technology that we have in place, such as CityWorks, as to how we take those calls and triage those calls and pass those calls to the departments as well, those complaints to departments as well. So we are reviewing 311's operations with the mayor's office and anxiously awaiting to expand our rollout.
Thank you, Commissioner. And as I noted earlier, we'll ensure that this is incorporated in a future finance hearing where we can talk more holistically about the technology approach at the city of Cleveland. Uh, I do not. Councilman Brian Casey.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. On page 470, with the contract under utilities, Telephone Ohio Bell has increased by $5 million since 2019. Can you just elaborate a little on why such the big increase?
Mr. Chair, to the councilperson, that's actually what I was referring to earlier. This is our AT&amp;T contract. This is where we house all of our citywide circuits. This is where we house, this is where our contract is under, as well as our SIP lines for our VoIP lines. So we are, we are responsible for paying the bills for utilities as well. CPP, for instance, has over 30 some substations. They upgraded their circuits, their backup circuits from analog to fiber. They were on analog circuits that were not tariff-regulated, where those circuits were extremely costly. They were paying, normally a circuit is about $1,000 a month. When they're unregulated by the tariffs, they're running $10,000 a month. Those circuits were replaced, were replaced last year over, I, I think it's like 33, if you will, 33 substations, as I stated before, with the LED project, cameras across the city, every camera needs a backhaul, which means it requires a circuit to get back to a recorder to be able to record that information. We've implemented circuits across the city with regard to the LED project. We upgraded circuits at every single recreation center, which is 22 rec. centers, as a result of the camera project, making sure that we had enough bandwidth in place to, to be able to maintain the citywide camera deployment as well.
All right, and Mr. Chairman, Telephone Exchange to the CFO, this is out of the general fund, correct? Or this, this is a small enterprise?
To the Chair, the Councilperson, section Internal Service Fund, so we figure out the expenditure level, and then we figure out the usage by each department, and then we charge it back.
All right. So, Mr. Chairman, this is kind of intriguing. So I don't want to beleaguer this here at the table, because we gotta get through this. But in the upcoming months, especially now that I hear that you're subsidizing substations and Cleveland Public Power, I think that the council, between Department of Public Utilities and Finance, that we should do a little, a more educational approach to educate the council on how this actually works, because every single department has a chargeback from, for Telephone Exchange, which is, you know, here, and I don't know if everybody completely understands how this, how this works. And I don't want to get really deep into the woods now with it, so.
I know, but I do want to answer that, that question.
Go ahead.
Want to clarify something to the Chair, the Councilman. We're not subsidizing CPP. If you look at the charges for services, when they had these increases, they actually got charged.
Okay.
It's not a subsidy to them.
Right, but, but, right, I just want to, and this is part of the education going forward, right, of how this works, seeing how there is a chargeback from every department to this department, right? And now I'm hearing that we're involving CPP and I Chair Utilities, so I just want to make sure that everybody has the proper information when it comes to this department, especially when we're paying AT&amp;T or Ohio Bell or whatever they're calling themselves today, you know, $11.5 million a year. That's, that's a big chunk of money that's coming out of the general fund or... So just for future, Mr. Chairman, if we can just kind of keep that on our radar, to have the Telephone Exchange explained more in depth to the council and how it actually works and how, how they charge everything back. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And I would just add, again, as we have technology hearings into the future, let's make sure we keep that in mind, that, that piece, that... Understood, Councilman Casey. Councilman Kevin Conwell.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be quick too. I'm gonna do some time management. Through the chair, to the CFO, 311, it's been used, it's used, it should be that, the residents should be able to dial 311. You have to dial 664-2000. It should be that way.
Mr. Chair, to the councilperson, you can currently dial 311. Mr. Chair, to the councilperson, you can currently dial 311.
Then you need to let us know that I've been dialing 664-2000. Oh, no, your people are good. They're good. And so let me ask you this, through the chair. Man, I implemented that, I wouldn't say a bad word, but, because you know, I implemented 311 years and years ago, and I've been highly disappointed, because you can even do budgeting off of 311, whereas, you know, the majority of the seniors call from this area, or the, the, they're calling about possums or skunks in another area. So then when you take your budget, it, it gives you the evidence, the supporting evidence, why you need to spend majority of your money in a certain area. Okay? And then you give the residents a, a number, a call taken number. Are you guys doing that? Because I never received any, any number at all, maybe because I've been dialing 664-2000.
Mr. Chair, to the councilperson, yes. When we take a call for a complaint, we triage, we identify what the caller is calling for, we create a case, a ticket, if you will, case for that problem, and we provide that, the citizen with a, a case number for them to call back and to see if it's been resolved.
Because I've been dialing 664-2000. And I always tell everybody, even my residents, dial 664-2000. That come from, you gotta communicate back to me. And I was frustrated about 311, because I was like, it's not being done right. And when we, when we, when I legislated it, it was 311 and reverse 911, which is now your code res. I did a dual phone legislation. Then we, we did care calls, was in there also for the seniors, because it's going off the same line. But I've been dialing 664-2000.
311?
Yeah, man, I've been telling people, and putting out my card, 664-2000. Because, but I've been getting results, your people are good. They're good. I've called, was it Valerie?
Yes.
She's good, and the other one, they picked the phones up, and they take, they take good care of me, and, you know, just been getting results with the 664. So I'm changing my card. Man, that's crazy. That's crazy. I'm only human. I'm only human, I'm only human. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Mike Palcik.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, my honorable colleague. I'm just trying to get some, get some, something straight here. The staffing that you have here listed on page 19, I keep my, on 472, that, this is, this is not the mayor's complaint, the mayor's action center, is it at all?
To the Chair, to the, Mr. Chair, to the councilperson, no, it is not.
So all this is, is when someone calls 664-2000, based on some of my other colleagues' comments, this is that line, et cetera?
Mr. Chair, to the councilperson, yes.
So the mayor's action center would be under where?
Mr. Chair, to the councilperson, is not in the IT budget?
Could someone tell me where it's at?
To, to the Chair, the councilperson, I think at the end of the last administration, the people that ran the mayor's action center left employment. And I think the, the administration is looking to streamline and funnel everybody into one system, which will be 311. So it's more efficient and, and there's one answer.
So, so educate me then. So you're telling us today, because this is the first I'm hearing about it, that the mayor's action center is unstaffed?
No. No, it's unstaffed.
To the Chair, the councilperson, to the best of my knowledge and Kim's, yes.
So is it staffed or not staffed?
To the best of my knowledge, it's not staffed.
So when you call 664-2900, who's answering the phone?
Mr. Chair, to the councilperson, 311.
It, it gets forwarded.
Just roll it over.
Mr. Chair, to the councilperson.
See, it's stuff like that.
Yeah, tell us.
I mean, come on, I mean, I mean, believe me, we're in March, and we just find out now that the mayor's action center is, is kaput?
To the Chair, the councilperson, the people that ran it, the staffing, no longer worked here.
Jim, Jim, I'm not, it's not the employees that left. The issue, what I'm trying to understand, is to educate the 17 members of city council who have it all, I, I don't have one of my dialing number cards, I got it all over my dialing number cards, the mayor's action center.
Mr. Chair, to the councilperson, those calls are being answered and resolved through 664-2000 or 311. We are handling those calls currently.
But the, but the mayor's action center, as we once knew it, no longer exists. Yes or no?
Yes, no longer exists.
Through the Chair, to the Councilman, that's correct.
Well, as Gomer Pao would say, my, 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 okay?
Councilman Palcik, will you give Councilman?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman, I, just jumping in to say, as a, it is my strong preference that there only be one
Amen.
phone number for the city, not 664, you know, not the mayor's action center plus 311. So as, as long as we're moving assertively towards a single unified system that works, I'm okay, but I, I want my colleague to be, to continue making his point. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. My point is that council needs to be apprised when there's decisions being made that affects our ability to inform our citizens adequately and properly. So if you could look at all my stuff that I put out, there's the mayor's action center, 664-2900 on it. And so I, we can, to all of our colleagues, you can get, that can, take that off your, your wonderful mystery telephone card list. And is there any, any, wait a minute, I saw, is there any other thing we should be aware of that doesn't exist anymore with regard to telephone exchange?
Through the Chair, to the Councilman, I, I don't know if there are any other unknown, unknown.
Not to his knowledge, Councilman.
Well, he's only been here eight days, right?
A little more than eight days.
He's still trying to find a telephone.
All right, Councilman, any other questions for Commissioner or Chief?
Thank you.
Thank you, and I will just, I'm gonna pass this over to our, our council president to continue running the meeting, but I will just echo Councilwoman Spencer. I don't know why it was ever a good idea to have multiple lines. It sounds crazy, redundant, wasteful, stupid. So I am so happy that we're moving to one number. Ms. Tilly, please read Internal Service Funds. Internal Service Funds, Council Press.
Got it, thank you.
Page 461 starts Internal Service Funds, starting with the sinking fund, general operations on page 466. President Justin M. Bibb, Secretary James E. Gentile, Member Blaine Griffin, and Assistant Secretary Elizabeth Ruby. Salaries and wages on page 468, 2021 unaudited, $188,890. 2022 budgeted, $184,583. Total expenditures also on page 468, 2021 unaudited, $728,557. 2022 budgeted, $872,654. Staffing on page 469, number of employees in December 2021, two. Budgeted for 2022, two. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much, Ms. Tilly. Mr. Gentile, Ms. Ruby, please proceed.
Well, the sinking fund is the bond retirement fund of the city. We take care of all of the city's debt. We're responsible for coordinating the issuance of the debt and making sure that it's paid on time. We do things such as general obligation debt, debt for the enterprise funds. We're also responsible for all the requirements that go with debt, making sure that we're within debt limits, and that we, we also coordinate the submission of continuing disclosure information, which is required through the SEC, and we make sure that the required arbitrage rebate calculations for every bond deal are completed.
Thank you, Ms. Ruby. Do we have any questions for Ms. Ruby? All right, Ms. Ruby, thank you so much, that is great. Appreciate it. That's what I was about to say, she just, she takes care of the bills, so everybody, nobody bother the person to take care of the bills. All right. All right, the next item is revenue bond service. Ms. Tilly, can you read revenue bond service?
Oh, they're still doing those?
You still doing those too? Okay, I'm sorry.
Oh, I thought, I thought that was...
Go ahead, apologize, you are doing revenue bond services as well.
Oh, I thought they did the whole thing.
Don't get away that easy.
Oh. It's all one, all one thing.
I don't think, is she, is she handling all of those?
Yes, yes, all those next, all that's the sinking fund.
Okay, so then, you know what, then, is, do we need to read all of those, Ms. Tilly, or is it just, just that one handles all of them?
I don't believe so, but I am not certain.
Sinking fund, revenue bond, debt service, debt service revenues and expenditures. Okay, so then, could you go over revenue bond, debt service, and then we'll go from there. Ms. Tilly, what page is revenue bond debt service? Excuse me as I get my bearings back.
Chairman, I don't believe revenue bond debt service has a page number, or I have misplaced it.
The debt service for revenue bonds is on pages four, 455 and 456. That shows the debt service for water, airport, OWDA loans.
Got it.
Yes.
All right, would you like to go over those at all, if you could?
This is just the principal and interest annual payments for the various debt throughout the city. Last year, the only debt that we issued, we did not issue any revenue debt last year.
All right. Well, let me just start out with a couple of questions for CFO, because I know that this is his area of expertise, he just comes from this. I've always been impressed by our bond ratings, and really, really want to make sure also, one of the real concerns that I've had about this year's budget is that it looks like the credit card is kind of getting maxed out, and we are only looking at about $50 million in general obligation bonds to fund various public improvements, roads, and bridges this year. Can you give us some background on how you came to that number? What does that mean as far as the impact? And then also, can you give us some background around our ratings and how we can make sure we keep our ratings good, so that we can make sure that we could borrow more to do more capital improvement, sir?
So to the Chairman, in terms of the general obligation, the planned $50 million debt issuance, it's my understanding that that's around, in the ballpark of what we typically would issue in a given year, and what the, the historical approach has been, has been to sort of model what we issue on what we're paying off. So it's kind of, whatever's going out is kind of coming right back in. So we kind, we maintain a, a level amount of debt on the city's books in terms of general obligation. You know, for the, the bond ratings, there, there's a lot that goes into the analysis that the three rating agencies engage in. I, I, you know, key metrics, of course, are sort of cash on hand, the ability to raise revenue, you know, just complying with our bond obligations, whether they be financial covenants or operating covenants, performance covenants. And so, you know, I think we are in a good position on both fronts, on the GO and the revenue side. You know, as we heard from the utilities, from the enterprise funds, they have pretty good cash on hand in excess of what their bond documents require for coverage ratio. And then on the GO side, as we've talked about, at least, I think this week or maybe last week, is we do have a, a good bit of unused capacity in, in our ability to issue debt, which I think is a good, a good metric to look at, because we're, from that measurement, we're not maxing out our available debt. we're not maxing out our available debt, right? We're, I think we have about $200 million of debt we could issue, and so leaving that cushion is a good metric from the perspective of the rating agencies.
Okay, and I just want to make sure I'm reading this right, Mr. Gentile, but just so you can know what I'm reading off of, and once again, you may not have this, but I'm just going to give you a couple of numbers. When our budget analysts looked at this in 2015, we had 131 that we had in bonds, that we were able to leverage, zero in 2016, two, in 2017, 73 million, 2018, we did 166 million, 2019, we had 81 million, 2020, we had 82 million, and then 115 million in 2021, but this year it says 50, so I just want to make sure I'm understanding that. I can get this to you so you can take a look if you could, and just if you could explain that to us, please.
To the Chair, I mean, I'm not sure if that's all the bonds, which include utility bonds, that also can, do, it could be refunding bonds where we're getting a better interest rate. Historically, new money issuances, as far as for the general fund assets, it varies for about 50 to 60 million. Now, those could be part refunding, they could be revenue bonds, we'd have to like take that break out and figure it out, which we could do, with the exception of if we have a big project or a special project. So in Kate, you know, the biggest one that we have recently is the police headquarters, so there was an extra issuance of another 50 million above, beyond the regular 50 or 55 million last year to facilitate the construction of that, but just the actual GO bonds or the subordinated, subordinated lien income tax bonds, if we can't issue GOs, we issue those. For the regular general fund assets, it's around 50 to 60 of new money. Now, we could do refundings, that might be in that number, and we'll be happy to break out that number as to what that pertains to.
And I'll give you that copy, I'll give you, actually, I'll give you another copy. Here, no, you can, I got one for you right here, but bottom line is, if you could.
Yeah, to the Chair, just looking at that chart, that includes the subordinated, subordinated lien income tax bonds, so the $50 million is just the general obligation bond.
Just GO.
Correct.
Okay, all right, because that concerned me a little bit, because I know that we have some projects that we have to consider. I know that we haven't made a decision yet, but we have the, to figure out if we're going to be a part of this GL mix and a couple of other things, as well as, I know we always want to increase our capacity to do, to do roads and bridges and other things like that, so I just wanted to make sure that we're not maxing out our card and we can still do some of those things.
Yeah, to the Chair, I think the, we have, on the GO side, we have a good deal of capacity that we could issue if we needed. The, the issue, from my perspective, is how we would pay that off.
Got you.
Is the, so we have ample financing available, we do not have ample funding to pay off that financing.
Got you, great, thank you. Mr. Councilman McCormick.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Tilly just reached out to say that she does need to read page 456 into the record, so if we could have Ms. Tilly read 456?
Ms. Tilly, can you read page 456 into the record?
Page 456, Revenue Bond Debt Service, 2021 unaudited, $4,132,150, 2022 budgeted, $4,136,325. Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. All right. Any other follow-ups? Any questions for Mr. Gentile and Ms. Ruby? Councilwoman Moore?
Thank you. I actually, my question's very brief, which is just that, you know, getting up to speed on municipal bond financing is something that will take longer than we have at the table, and I'm wondering if you have any recommendations for cities who you think are doing a great job at their municipal bond processes, who we should be looking to or learning from, or sort of who are the thinkers in this field around how to best utilize our debt options as a city? Through the Chair.
Through, through the Chair to the Councilwoman, first, I've spent the last 10 years of my life working in municipal bonds, so I'm happy to sit down with any of you.
So I was about to say, he's the man, he's the guy, there it is.
So you, you are the person.
Yeah, I'm happy, I'm happy to talk to any of you as, when and as you'd like. So that's a tough question, there are a lot of cities and other issuers out there doing a lot of cutting-edge things. I'm typically not a huge fan of those cutting-edge activities, they tend to be very complicated, and in my experience, as bond deals get more complicated, they introduce in sort of commensurate amount of risk and, on the, on the long term, to the issuer in particular. So from, from where I'm sitting, the more boring our bond program can be, the, the more we can make it plain vanilla, the better it will be for us to manage that going forward. Now, sometimes, because of, if we want to support an economic development transaction, there are complexities that just are unavoidable. There are a lot of state constitutional issues that are very limiting, that we have to structure around, there are ordinance issues, there are Ohio revise code issues, so those transactions can be very complicated, but worth it because they promote an important public purpose. So I don't know if that answers your question, I think, you know, typically, the best way that I think I can make our bond program, or we can make our bond program as effective as it can be, is to keep it simple where, where we can, and to really, really, really push the underwriters that we have to work with to execute these deals on fees, on structures, to really ensure that what is being put together and sold to investors with the city's name on it is understandable, is, and is in the city's best interest, and that, that can be a real challenge.
Thank you, and, and now I'm going to ask a question that will belie some like basic macroeconomic, I mean, I'm going to tell you some macroeconomic tropes, and then you tell me how wrong I am, okay? But generally speaking, we seem to be headed into a period of higher inflation than we have had previously, and historically, when macroeconomists talk about increased inflation, the Federal Reserve might try to balance that out by increased interest rates in order to sort of slow down, slow down the economy a little bit, and I'm just wondering if there's any argument to be made, or what the sort of consideration was, that if interest, if interest rates are going to be increasing in the quarters and years ahead, is there any argument to be made around increasing our debt pull right now to get in a lower interest rate earlier before interest rates go up? Through the Chair to the Director.
Through, through the Chair to the Councilwoman, in a vacuum, excuse me, in a vacuum, sure, but we also exist under Treasury guidelines, which regulate the tax-exempt bond market, and there are, excuse me, requirements for bond proceeds to be spent, et cetera, in, in certain periods of time, so there are legal limitations as to how we could proceed on those lines. You know, rising interest rates for a long-term fixed-rate deal will make debt more expensive for issuers like the city of Cleveland, you know, so that, that's, that is a reality that we're going to have to deal with in terms of how we structure the transactions that we do, and, you know, sort of already, maybe taking a step back from my point a moment ago about simplicity, when interest rates are higher, the shorter end of the yield curve, the one-year, two-year, three-year markets are cheaper, right? Because interest rates go up with time, because time is risk, and, and so they're, depending on what we're trying to finance, there could be good reasons to have variable rate, variable rate debt to take advantage of the short end of that market, depending on the cost, you know, the all-in cost, because variable rate debt is not just cheaper on interest rate, it also comes typically with a letter of credit or a standby purchase agreement with a bank, and they charge fees for that, and so the, the trick there is making sure that in, in the aggregate, the, the all-in costs are lower for the city than the long-term fixed-rate deal that wouldn't have that support product.
Great, thank you. Those are all my questions, Chair.
And I got a free dinner if any one of y'all can repeat what he just said. No, that was actually great. Actually, I'm enjoying this, it's really, you learn as you go with this stuff. All right, okay, any other questions regarding revenue bond service? Councilman Mike Palensky.
I just want, thank you, Mr. Chairman, my humble colleagues, to the Finance Director, on page 457, I just want to get that clear in my own brain here, that in property taxes, that is the portion of the property taxes that we must, that we must allocate toward debt service, correct?
Mr. Chairman, to the Councilman, that's the portion of the millage that is dedicated to the general obligation bond payment.
Right, okay.
There's 4.35 mils out of our total
Yeah.
assessment that goes to, to pay general obligation bonds.
And so, Betsy, as you go down all of these, so that would be the same indication for all the rest of them, correct? The, a portion, like in the income tax, same thing, correct?
This page shows all the various sources that go into paying the general fund-related kind of debt, which are following on the next couple pages, which shows those debts, which is the, the general obligation, the subordinate lien income tax.
Yes, so this, within, within this budget, we are allocating $82 million to cover debt service.
That's correct, yes. Yes, the governmental debt, yes. This is not the enterprise.
General obligation.
General obligation, subordinated income tax, core city bonds, some TIF bonds.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman. Okay, any more questions? Seeing no more questions for Ms. Ruby, can we move to debt service revenues and expenditures?
Page 457, debt service revenues, 2021 unaudited, $76,293,210, 2022 budgeted, Debt service expenditures on page 459, 2021 unaudited, $76,293,210, 2022 budgeted, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, and I know Ms. Ruby just went over it, did you have anything you wanted to add to that, Ms. Ruby?
I know this, these two balance out, the, the revenues from page 457 to page 459 total, and these are the expenditures that take place last year and this coming year for these various types of bonds.
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Ruby? Mr. Councilman Palensky.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Ruby's been doing this a long time, in fact, how long?
Well, this, I've been doing about 26 years, I've been here 40 years.
Okay, one of those troopers, old-time troopers here, okay.
So you started out when you were 10, Ms. Ruby?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so, because you've always been able to give us clear and concise, is there anything that we should be looking at or be considering that should give us pause?
Ms. Ruby?
With regard to our debt, no, I think we're in very good shape with our debt. You know, we've always been careful on making sure that we had the capacity to, to pay for it, and I think the rating agencies and their ratings indicate that they agree with the strategies we've been taking.
Okay, so you're fine with what you're looking at?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I want, because you've always given us good advice, and I want to just make sure that good advice continues, thank you.
Councilman Palensky, I know who to bring to the table to get your attention now, because I never see you just take somebody's word for it.
Well, in her case, I will.
All right, Councilman McCormick.
I will just say that the finance staff is all individually excellent, but let's also remember that they worked under the Sharon Dumas.
That's right.
And you know that Sharon Dumas was not letting anything past her, so.
Thank you so much. Ms. Tilly, seeing no more questions, can you go into debt service, unvoted tax-supported obligations?
Page 460, unvoted tax-supported obligations, balance as of December 31st, 2021, $341,075, 2022 principal, $25,905,000, 2022 interest, $13,227,63, total due, $39,132,63. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much. Just one quick question about unvoted tax-supported obligations, can you guys just give us just a brief summation of how that works? Because it's my understanding that if we raise fees that go specifically towards a department, or to the general, to a department, that it actually will be considered an unvoted tax? I know we went through some of this when we were doing the LED safe legislation, could you just give us a little background so that us as a council knows this, that? What defines an unvoted tax?
These are bad.
Yeah, in layman's terms, because I just want our council to understand that we just can't go around raising fees and doing those type of things to increase revenues, because some of those can be considered an unvoted tax. Can you just give us some background on that?
Mr. Chairman, to, to the council, the unvoted tax-supported means that they were unvoted obligations that we approve, or that the City Council approves. You're throwing me off. And that, under the general bond ordinance and the sinking, that we did back in, probably Councilwoman Palensky remembers back after default and whatever, there was a general bond ordinance that governs the general obligation bonds, and in that, we have dedicated the, that 4.35 mils of property taxes, and we also dedicated a portion of the income tax that would also be used to pay the debt service on general obligation bonds, that currently comes out of the restricted income tax. So those are the taxes that support the general obligation bonds. I mean, we have, you know, different, so I'm not sure, is that answer your question?
Okay, yeah, that's helpful. I just know when we did the LED safe ordinance, and we were talking about raising fees for the actual certifications, that we had to be very careful of where those dollars went to, because it would be considered an unvoted tax, and I just wanted to make sure I had clarification on that.
To the Chair, to the Chair, I think if, if you're, you have to be careful that you're not charging more than that service
Right.
takes to provide, and I think if, if you're charging more, that's when you can get into a problem on that.
Okay, got it. All right, any questions for Councilmember Palensky?
Just from a historical standpoint, it's, and again, either Ms. Ruby or Mr. Gentile, and the main reason for that was because, again, prior to '78, there was co-mingle funds, correct?
Yes.
Which one of, was one of the reasons that led us into default, because there was, that's why we had to have the separate enterprise accounts, clean public power, division water, da-da-da-da-da-da-da, because there was just this mess, and as a result, that helped lead to our demise, so everybody should be aware of this, was, this was to safeguard the future, the city's future finances, that we had to do this.
Mr. Chairman, under the general bond ordinance, the county sends the property taxes directly to the trustee, and we have a schedule of how much the CCA has to send every month to the trustee, so directly before it comes to the city for the payment of these bonds, that was the, those were the agreements that were made at that time, and it's probably one of the big safeguards that we have, and it's rather unusual, other cities don't have it, but it's a plus for the city with regard to our ratings.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Hearing no other questions for Ms. Ruby, we can move to the rainy day fund.
Page 264, rainy day reserve fund, oh, 364, page 364, excuse me, rainy day fund, 2021 unaudited ending balance, $45,7,359, 2022 budgeted ending balance, $45,32,359. Mr. Chairman.
All right, Ms. Ruby, before you left the table, we definitely just wanted to say thank you for your years of service. I've always known you to just be a great public servant, and once again, one of the beauties of being able to do this budget hearing is that the broader public gets a chance to really see how, how, how great public service we have in the city of Cleveland. So thank you so much.
All right. Concur, concur.
All right. CFO or Mr. Gentile, you want to go into the rainy day?
To the Chairman, on page 364, in, in the center of the page is the rainy day reserve fund, so what you'll note in there, the budgeted amount is $45 million for the end of the year, right now, there's an anticipated of the year. Right now, there's not anticipated, there's not an anticipated increase for the year. We usually wouldn't figure that out to the end of the year if there was extra money to put in here. So, all you see here is the receipt is anticipated interest. So, we plan on, we budgeted that we're going to end the year at $45,32,359 based upon that interest, the estimated interest for the year.
Thank you. And CFO, I know that our former Finance Director was very, very good at just making sure that she helped explain why it was good to keep a rainy day balance. What is a healthy rainy day amount that we should try to always keep? And what should be our goal? And what is a healthy rainy day fund to really keep? And how should we keep this amount?
Yeah. To the Chair, the state recommends 5%. They cap it, the budget stabilization portion.
5% of the total budget.
Of the total revenues in the general fund.
Total revenue of the general fund.
However, there's a second piece of that which we enacted, and I think we brought this to council a couple of years ago, to add an additional 5% for potential lawsuits, settlements, and other things. So, our goal as the city is now to get it to the 10%, which is a combination of both of those, the 5% and the 5%, which would be a total 10%. So, we target 10%. And legally under state, the current state law, that's all that we could have in there as far as a rainy day reserve fund.
And CFO, do we plan on trying to continue with that policy? Or is that a healthy policy that you plan on continuing?
To the Chair, yes. When funds allow it, absolutely want to maintain to the maximum allowed under state law.
Okay. Because I know there's some folks that want to just spend rainy day funds, and I'm not a big fan of that. I believe that you should always keep that cushion. But, Mr. Gentile?
Yeah, I would say one of the reasons our bond ratings are as high as they are because.
Because of that.
They look at that, and they look at the continued adding to that balance. That's a true safeguard. That's kind of, the rainy day is kind of the last resort, you know, in a very bad situation, economically or disaster. That's the last line of defense to keep the city kind of operating and service being provided to the citizens. This is a tap into that. Legislatively, the administration has to go back to council to budget that money in the case that it needs to be used. So, it's, you know, it's a safeguard for the council and the city and the citizens. And it's good to keep that thing very healthy, because that does help our bond ratings, which keeps our interest rates down.
Thank you so much. Great explanation. Thank you so much, Mr. Gentile. Councilman Brian Casey.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman to the CFO, we have no, I know, look, it says that you're, look, you want to put $25,000 into the rainy day fund. We have no intention this year of dipping into our rainy day fund, correct?
Through the Chair to the Councilman, no.
Okay. So, then one, I just have one clarification on something that was, has been talked about a couple of times. There was $121 million rollover from last year. Are we correct?
Through the Chair to the Councilman, $131 million.
$131 million, I'm sorry. Well, you just found yourself 10 million more. Congratulations. $131 million. Out of that $131 million, you were going to close the gap with $56 million, correct? What happens to the other $75 million?
Through the Chair to the Councilman, it'll remain in the general fund, unencumbered for future use.
It just, we don't, we wouldn't, so if we know, we were always told that we would want to have, now we heard 10% in a rainy day fund, right? Which is equivalent to what we were always told on this side. And our former CFO, Chief Dumas, always said that, you know, you'd want six to nine months in reserve for the rainy day fund. Could we possibly use some of that $75 million to continue to build on the rainy day fund in case those revenues that we're hoping come in actually don't? So that we know where that money is sitting as opposed to just unencumbered in the general fund. Mr. Chairman to the CFO?
So, through the Chairman to the Councilman, we could certainly explore with the Law Department on the sort of legal uses of the funds that derive from ARPA. Now, the money that sits in the general fund unencumbered cannot be spent unless we come back to this body.
Right. No, I, no, I understand that. But instead of sitting it unencumbered, okay, we'll just say something like this. Does it help our bond rating if we have a higher rainy day fund, right? I mean, I'm, you know, I just, instead of the money just sitting out there unencumbered, if it was actually allocated somewhere, Mr. Chairman to the CFO, then it's easier for at least us on this side to see where it is. And it doesn't look like we've got the shortfall, we've got this rollover, and now we've got unencumbered cash sitting around. I'm just trying to tighten the dollars up. Mr. Chairman to the CFO?
Through the Chairman to the CFO. So, yeah, we can absolutely discuss that. There is a cap under state law.
Right.
In terms of what can go in the rainy day fund. And then on the bond rating point, the rating agencies generally will look at just total cash on hand, total sort of available cash.
Okay.
And so, whether it sits in the general fund or in the rainy day fund, it would be.
It's still there.
It's still there. It's available to be spent, and it's not encumbered for any other purpose. So, from the perspective of the rating agencies, you know, they would take a holistic view of, all right, we have this specific rainy day fund which exists under state law, and then we have this other bit of money in the general fund. All of it is unencumbered cash that the city has available to it.
Okay. So, I guess we could technically say we have a balance, but with our revenues and our rollover, we technically have a balanced budget with a 75, 65 or 75, you guys are better at the math, $75 million unencumbered cash sitting in the general fund. Is that correct in saying that?
Through the Chair to the Councilman, yes. As, sitting here with the budget figures today, that's exactly right.
Okay. And then maybe that's a deeper conversation we can have when we talk about reconciliation and all that other stuff. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and Mr. CFO.
I'm having the staff put together some reconciliation conversation guidance now. So, if you want to make sure you park that, do me a favor and make sure you talk to Ms. Columby, so that if that's a discussion we want to have in reconciliation, because we won't have a lot of time to do that. So, if you can give it to her in advance, thank you, okay? All right.
Questions, Chairman?
I thought, Mr. Gentile, did you have something ahead? Are you good?
No, the Chief covered it.
Okay, thank you. I had Councilwoman Moore and then Councilman Polensky. Okay. Councilman Polensky?
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I just want to get back to the comment that the CFO made. If, you indicated, Mr. Chairman to Jim, that the standard or rule of law or practice is 5% of the general?
To the Chair, the Councilperson, the state rules allow 5% for budget stabilization and 5% for pending potential suits and so forth. So, you can have a total in your rainy day reserve fund. And when Chief Dumas used to talk about six months, she was combining the rainy day and the carryover, which is the $75 million projected at the end of this year. But state law caps the actual physical rainy day fund for the city at 10%.
Okay.
Of estimated revenues in the general.
Yeah, because, you know, we, yes, I don't understand, because we exceed 5%. And so, we, again, we had the rainy day fund, and I'm trying to figure out, we had another fund as well. What happened to the reserve fund?
To the Chair, the Councilperson, that was merged probably about 15 years ago into the rainy day reserve fund.
So, we just have the one. That's all we have now.
Yeah, to the Chairperson, I mean, to the Chairperson, the Councilperson, correct?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Councilwoman Moore?
Okay, thank you. I hope you don't mind, if this is a good time, Chair, I have a question just broadly on the finance sheets that I think this is the right time for. So, I hope to turn us to page 40, to the consolidated financial summary. This makes sense in my mind, because it's connected broadly to these questions of the whole financial structure. And what I want to draw attention to is on page 40, under financial uses. So, just so that we're all on the same page literally and figuratively, this is like a broad summary sheet. So, as we've been going department by department, talking about salaries and wages and benefits, these have been the broad categories that we've seen department by departments, and these are essentially aggregated. Capital outlay falls from $13 million actual spend in 2020, $16 million actual spend in 2021, to $13,000 in 2022. Looking historically in prior mayor's estimates, it seems as though we always assume there's very little capital outlay. And then by the end of the year, there is then more, we've actually spent a fair amount. I think this has to do with the transfer order and sort of as things progress throughout the year. But I'm wondering if you could explain that number, because that drop very significantly helps us balance out the whole, the whole number for the current mayor's estimate. So, I would love just an explanation on the record about that drop in capital outlay and how that interacts with the spend throughout the year through the Chair to the Director.
Director?
Through the Chair to the Councilwoman, you're absolutely correct. We don't anticipate any capital outlay when we start preparations with the mayor's estimate. That always happens at the end of the year. As part of our transfer ordinance, we also do a supplemental ordinance. And a transfer ordinance is just moving back and forth money. There's no net increase. A supplemental is we're doing a bottom line net increase to the budget. And as we see funds that are available, this past supplemental ordinance, I believe, was $34 million. So, of that $34 million, then we had approximately $16 million that we use for capital purposes.
Great, thank you. And you might not know this off the top of your head, but when we look at essentially the opportunity to move somewhere between, you know, 13, 16, and then the year before that, in 2019, it was $30 million into capital outlay. That means that we are underspending $30 million somewhere else in this budget, right? So, through the Chair to the Director, is it your understanding that has typically come from the understaffing within City Hall? Or are there other year-over-year savings that have always freed up that little bit of wiggle room later on in the year for capital projects?
Through the Chair to the Councilwoman, that is a very good question. And it does tie into the discussion we were having earlier. So, it's my understanding, looking at the same documents that you just walked through, that the way these savings were generated over the years was through vacant positions, budgeted, but vacant positions. So, this then leads us to where we are with this budget. And so, I think it is my goal, and I believe the mayor shares this goal, is to reduce the future reliance in the budget on these budgeted positions that may be filled.
Right.
But may not be filled. And so, that's what, that's the work that I think we need to do in this year, is to really assess the organization so that the budget is a true, a more accurate projection of what it is we intend to spend, so that we can more intentionally at the outset of the year allocate resources.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I am, I tend to agree with that assessment, and I look forward to seeing, well, I guess this goes to my next question, which is, let's say we get better at this. Let's say we get better at more accurately pinpointing our spend over the course of the year, the vacancies that we are filling. We suddenly no longer at the end of the year have this wiggle room in the budget that we spend on capital projects. What are we, what will not happen if we don't have $15 million at the end of the year because of understaffing at City Hall? Through the Chair to the Director.
Through the Chair to the Councilwoman, I think that's a very difficult question for me, sitting here right now, to answer. And so, I don't know the answer to that. But that is, I fully expect that the answer to that will be a dialogue from this side of the table to that side of the table, figuratively, because you're sitting on this side.
The whole time, I've been stuck on this side. Next to your chair, I hope to move up in the world.
We're going to find you over this.
But to the Chair and the rest of the council, we, you know, this will be a collaborative effort to crack this nut. And so, I expect to have these discussions throughout the year.
Okay, great. I appreciate the chance to discuss these, especially in light of the broader conversation about this being not a structurally balanced budget, but instead a budget that relies on our carryover using federal dollars, you know, keeping in mind that we've clearly kind of been off the mark in past years to the tune of, and this isn't even the full tune of how much we've been off the mark, right? We've been off the mark by, what were you saying, roughly 50, 50 million in the past, upwards of 50 million in the past through the Chair to the Director? By the fall?
Through the Chair to the Councilwoman, I'm not sure I stated a particular sum, but I do believe, just sort of leafing through prior budget books, we've carried over around, you know, 6% to 7% vacancies year over year.
Okay. So, just in terms of this conversation, that we haven't quite gotten good at pinpointing our spend just yet. Maybe, maybe in this world, 6% to 7% is typical, right? Maybe other municipalities get it closer. And maybe over the coming years, we will, we will be getting it closer. That's certainly a metric that I would be looking at. But I just wanted to flag this particular issue as we head into reconciliation, thinking about the use of the federal dollars to not float, but to sort of help us reach a higher mark of staffing here at City Hall. And that, those conclude my questions. Chair?
Great line of questions, Councilwoman. And let me just tell you that, like minds, think alike. We already have our policy staff trying to do some research, staff on exactly what you're talking about, so that we could try to find a way to have a more, a slightly more structurally balanced budget. And myself and Chief Abulnamas, and as well as Mayor Bibb, have started having those discussions as well. Because you're exactly right, we, you know, may want to cut back on some of those unfield positions, projections. And I would love for you to have a conversation with our policy staff, because your line of questioning actually clarifies a little bit about what we've been trying to do. So, please talk with Jessica Columby and Joe Titren, because they're already working on that. And you may be able to add some insight to that.
Sure thing, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. And Chief Abulnamas, I hope that you see that it's, we got some great, great folks over here. I'm actually enjoying this. But please help give us some guidance on that, because like I told you yesterday, we want to be responsible in our fiduciary responsibility, okay?
To the Chair, I don't know the answer to that, sort of what the right number is.
That sweet spot.
I can say pretty confidently that hitting it right on the mark is not the right answer.
It's not, yes.
It's sort of an impossible goal. So, I think flexibility, some degree of flexibility is useful just for the efficient administration of government. But, you know, I think it's our, we have a responsibility to do as best as we can to get that number as close to accurate as we reasonably can do.
Great. And we look forward to having that conversation and reconciliation, because there is going to have to, you know, I think we have some opportunities there, okay? Thank you so much. I have Councilman Kerry McCormick.
Just very briefly, Mr. Chair, and just to touch on the Councilwoman's line of questioning, you know, I believe, and this is one out of 17, but that those vacancies were retained on purpose to inflate that number, my opinion, one out of 17. And I would say that if we can right-size that, the great philosopher Brian Casey's been talking about right-sizing those numbers. And so, I would say, though, that if we can maintain or increase our revenue stream while right-sizeing those positions, that would allow for additional cash flow to potentially bond more, because then we'd have additional revenues to pay down a higher bond level. So, to your point, I think it could really help us achieve other macro goals, instead of just saying we're going to artificially inflate numbers so we can play with more money next year. So, I think what you're saying, I think, and what the Chief is saying, and what the Council President is saying, is having a clearer picture so we can be more strategic moving forward. Really good conversation. One last point, Mr. Chairman, on the point of the moment, and that is the rainy day fund. So, Chairman to the Chief, briefly, can you, we've already heard that it helps with bond ratings. We had some cheap rhetoric from Polit... We had some cheap rhetoric from politicians running for mayor, cheap populism about draining the rainy day fund and draining CPP and giving a receipt to residents, which, you know, sounds great. It's cheap populism from people who knew better and bankrupted the city before. But chief, can you explain why does it save money for the citizens of the city of Cleveland to have better bond ratings and having money in the bank helps us get those bond ratings? Does that, let me not presume that, does that save the citizens of the city of Cleveland money?
Through the chair to the councilman, yes. So at the highest level, when the city issues debt, the rating agencies and the investors who are going to buy those bonds, they want to know that they're going to get paid back, that they're, when they, when they commit their money and exchange their cash for a bond, they want to know that they're going to get their principal payment once a year and their interest payment twice a year. And the best measure to give someone comfort that that's going to happen is to have cash on hand. And so the more cash we have on hand, the more comfort it gives investors and therefore they will demand, in theory, lower interest rates, which then, which thus saves the city money.
So when I get my mortgage, if I get a point down on my interest rate or my car note and I get a lower interest rate, my monthly payment is less to that, to Chevy or to fifth or to third federal bank because I have a low interest rate. Similar theory here. We spend less taxpayer dollars on interest when we have things like a rainy day fund. Therefore, if we scored a cheap point and liquidated these funds and ran out to the public and said, oh, look how good of a person I am, I liquidated the city's dollars to give you all five bucks apiece, in the long run, we're going to be spending more taxpayer dollars on money to banks through interest rates because we made a foolish short-term decision like that. Is that correct?
Through the chair to the councilman, that's, that's absolutely correct and those figures are enormous.
So when we move forward and we think about easy rhetoric, having these accounts in here are important to save money, not only fiduciary responsibility and all that, but it also saves money for our taxpayers. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Well, councilman, I will tell you that politics is easy. No, no, no problem. I will tell you that politics is easy, but governing is a lot harder. And that's what you're talking about. How do we govern? And how do we govern responsibly? Councilwoman Moore, I think you wanted a point.
No, I'm okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Great discussion, great discussion. Let's move to non-departmental expenses and county auditor deductions. Ms. Tilly, Ms. Saban, do you, we had it?
Page 359, county auditor deductions. 2021 unaudited, $1,050,536. 2022 budgeted, $3,200,000. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. 359, 359. Director or Mr. Gentile?
To the chair, yeah, this, this section is what the county deducts off our property taxes for fees for different things they provide to the city. The biggest change on this and the biggest increase is last year was an election year and because the county board of elections runs, runs the elections, you'll see the $2 million, the board of election expenses is the major increase to pay for those elections. They're billed a year afterwards. So in 2022's, when will we paint, when they'll be deducting that from our revenue stream to pay for last year's citywide elections?
So basically in 2022, the next time we will see probably an influx would be 2026. And every four years, we should see that influx and everything, right?
Yeah. And to the chair, if there's a smaller election on an issue, we also get charged, but it's not this big. This is, you know, all the council and the mayoral election, which is a lot of time and effort by the county. So there's some, there's some variability, some smaller amounts, but the big dollars is every four years when we have the general election.
And does that include small elections that we may have, like if somebody's trying to drive a precinct or something? Does that money get attributed to that as well?
No, to the chair, yeah, anything that the county board of election does by way of elections would come in this line. So you'll see in different years, we've had, you know, only 5,000 in 2019, 2020, we had 600,000, 2021, we didn't, we didn't have any, and it's all being built. So yeah, any election that the county was involved in.
Okay. Councilman Mike Balassey.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman to the CFO, on the non-productive land sales, is that the land bank sales?
Through the chair to the councilman, I believe so, but I can confirm that.
Yeah, you can confirm that. I would have thought that figure would be much larger, but nonetheless, okay. And so the Caga County Auditor and Treasure Collection Fee, that's what we pay them to do what?
Through the chair to the councilman, that's the, we pay the county so they could perform their administrative function of collecting the property taxes and remitting them and advancing them to us. So this is our fee that we pay to them for that function.
Man, they have jumped that, that charge substantially since 2019.
Through the chair to the councilman, they also performed a triennial that year as well too, that we'll be paying for in 2022.
So that's the reason for that?
Yes.
So it's just not that they're wearing a mask, they're, they're doing it because they have to do it, okay?
Yeah.
And I don't mean a mask for COVID either, okay? But, okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Jones?
Mr. Chairman, the, I presume the board of elections charges all of the city's fees based upon the elections?
To the chair, the councilperson, yes. Based on what elections are held in each city across the county, they will be charged a share of the fees for the elections that are being held in their communities.
And Mr. Chairman, a question, how does that actually work? Because I know that they use the various different school building sites. So is it, are they, are they paying for those site locations? How is the cost being charged to us? Do they have a breakdown?
Through, through the chair to the councilman, the board of elections has staff. They also can maintain sort of cybersecurity measures for the election to ensure the election's integrity. So they, they have expenses and they charge.
Do they give us a breakdown on what that is when they, they charge? Are they just arbitrarily say we need 2 million, but no accountability behind it?
Through the chair to the councilman, we can double check that.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, we, we could ask for a breakout. They don't provide it, but we could certainly ask and take a look at that.
And, and then, Mr. Chairman, I guess when we look at the, we'd have to probably get the information from county government, how much the board of elections bring in? I mean, what are their, how does that work? Because I always thought, Mr. Chairman, that the state took care of paying them the money because it seems like they get all of their rules and regulations from the, the state. So, you know, I'd just be interested to know how that fundamentally function. But, but right here, right now, for our purposes in the city of Cleveland, they just charge us a fee and, but we'll find out what that is. But they just, whenever they have an election in the city, is it 2 million every time they have an election in the city?
To the chair, the councilperson, every four years, it's a very high number. I don't know if it's 2 million, I think that's up slightly. But every four years, there is a substantial charge by the county for the general elections across the city.
And is that based on probably, I presume it's the presidential election, Mr. Chairman? To Mr. Gentile?
To the chair, I'm sorry, to the chair, the councilperson, it's the mayoral and the council elections. We don't really get charged for the presidential election that, because that's a federal function. This is more the local elections and/or local issues.
And also through the chair to the councilman too, we had two elections this year that we'll be paying for in 2022. We had the primary and the general. The general had other issues on it, so that'll be split between the city, the county and the state. The primary was just the city of Cleveland elections, so we'll be paying the full freight on that.
I see. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much, Councilman Jones. Let's move to transfers to other funds. Oh, sorry, Mr. Harsh.
Thank you, Chairman. This is a shocker to me. I always assumed that the board of elections was paid out of state or county funds since it's a function of this, their mandate. So that was 200, $2 million to cover two elections last year? That, that's correct? That's how much we had to pay to, to pay for the two municipal elections?
Mr. Cordy, Mr. Gentile?
Through the chair to the councilman, yes, that's our estimate on what we're going to have to pay for those elections.
The things you learn. Chairman, that's like $20 per voter.
Yeah.
That's insane. Candidates don't spend that much per voter.
All right.
I yield.
Great.
That's insane.
Thank you. All right, let's move to transfers to other funds.
Page 360, transfers to other funds. 2021 unaudited expenditures, $83,114,781. 2022 budgeted, $45,145,256. Mr. Chairman.
All right. I am going to turn over the meeting to the majority leader, Councilman McCormick. I have an obligation that I have to go attend to. I want to remind everyone to please keep nine members. I put out a call to a couple, actually, we can, when we vote, we need to have at least nine. But I have put out a call to the other council members. I'd like everybody to stick around. We only have two more departments and we are going to hear from Office of Quality Control and Performance Management today. And just one other housekeeping item, it is my goal and my mission to have us done tomorrow as early as possible so that we can pull together as a council, have a brief discussion or a discussion about reconciliation, and then move towards meeting with the mayor and his financial team so that we don't have to spend all day Saturday and Sunday over the weekend getting it here. Because once again, I want to outline our process, we have to have a second reading by Monday because this has to sit then for approximately 14 or 14 or 15 days. And then after it sits for 14, 15 days, we want to vote on this, final approval of the budget by March 21st. It is very important that we get this done by March 21st and not try to push it further because we have to have this done by April 1st or else the state can come in and do their own budget for us. So as responsible fiscal stewards, I'd ask that you be engaged if you do have key reconciliation item, issues. I won't guarantee that you will get all of them or any of them. But what I will tell you is I do have the research team drawing up reconciliation. Once we get them and we agree on a few things, then we'll go and have a conversation and I'll have a conversation with the mayor and the CFO so that we can have a final document and be ready to move this forward so that we can meet our fiscal obligation. I ask everybody to be judicious, but I wanted to outline the process so that everybody could be ready for tomorrow. Ms. Spencer?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. It's on the process point, does the finance committee then on Monday review to the ideas that we were, we're on Monday night voting on a revised budget based on council's recommendations? Is it the responsibility of finance committee to review, when, when do we come back after tomorrow before Monday night's vote?
So, oh, I was just, I was, first of all, I was wrong. Let me clarify one thing. My attorneys just let us know that it only has to sit for seven days. So that gives me a little bit more patience. But then number, but to answer your question, the second reading is on the floor. So we're already hearing it's not going through finance, it will go to the full vote on Monday evening, is my understanding. So it's not finance, but let me double check.
I think, I think what I'm asking is when does, when does the council, well, we'll be, we'll be working.
I want to make sure you get your answer.
Okay. What happens, so we're going to meet as a full body tomorrow, correct?
Yes.
To talk about reconciliation items?
To make sure that we try to put together reconciliation items so that we can present to the administration and have something to vote on for Monday.
And when do we, we as a body review what we will be voting on on Monday night?
Tomorrow, once we agree on it. And well, let me, let me say this to you, I'll have a clear email to everyone with full steps so that everybody can have that.
Okay.
Because it's my understanding that we would actually have to just go to the full floor, which means that it will be, I think we have to have at least 24 hours before we actually, it has to sit there for like 24 hours before, it has to be there for like 24 hours. So probably Saturday or Sunday, we would have it up, the actual final piece of legislation, and then we'll vote for it on, on Monday evening. But what I'll do is make sure that we get the attorneys to give a clear guidance to make sure that we follow everything. Because I've just gotten about three messages about there's been a couple of charter changes that we actually may have a little bit more flexibility to. So let me just wait till tomorrow to give you that full guidance. But bottom line, let me just cut to the chase. I would like to not risk running up until the deadline to have, to try to put this budget in. I don't want to risk it. I would rather us try to get this done and let it sit for the few days that we have because we also know that we probably won't have a meeting on Monday, the 14th, which means that it's important for us to have something in for second reading next week. And that's where I want to go. And then I'll get very clarification on what we'll be voting for and the timing and make sure we get that. I apologize, Mr. Dryer is here to give us some guidance. Mr. Dryer, can you come over and give us some guidance? I'm just going to have you just jump in. I know that is probably.
You can put it over there, Brian.
Yeah, go ahead.
I believe what Councilwoman Spencer's asking is when is the finance committee going to, going to vote on the?
Monday, oh, Monday.
Yeah, that's what I think she thinks.
Monday. My apologies, Monday.
Right.
Yeah, so the finance committee does have to vote on it Monday, then it goes to the full floor for second.
There's no vote on Monday night, it's just second reading.
It's just second reading.
Right.
Got it. I apologize.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman McCormick, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Alan, can you, can you hang for a second?
Yeah, Alan, one second.
But is it, Mr. President, and I'm trying to rack my brain from prior years, is it, is there a, it's been a long week, is there a provision in which the budget cannot be changed after second reading?
Yes.
So it cannot be changed after second reading, is that correct?
It can always be changed.
No, I don't think.
That's correct in that it has to lay over for the seven days.
Right.
There can be no changes after second reading and before it's passed.
Right, because the, the final product must be aired out for seven days, is that correct?
Correct.
Councilman Jones, and then I'll come back if we could.
Very quickly, Mr. Chairman.
Hold on, one second, one second, one second. I got two points.
To that point.
I got two points. Councilman Joe Jones?
Just really clarification, Mr. Chairman. We will, the council as a whole will have reconciliation when?
Tomorrow, we're going to go right into conversations after we finish the budget on reconciliation matters.
Tomorrow?
Yes, sir.
And then after we've done that, we give, we make the, you know?
Then we have to make sure that there's agreement between, it's our budget, but we'll work with the administration and the CFO on the recommendations that we come up with.
And then they go back and say, okay, yes, we agree. If we don't agree, and then how does that process work?
If we agree, then everything is fine and we move forward. If we don't agree, well, then that's when we gotta have an old-fashioned standoff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. I do have Councilman Harsh, and then I'll come back this way. Councilman Harsh?
To the, to the, to the question of days, Mr. President, I was told 14 it has to sit. Because if you vote no, it has to sit for seven days, then if you vote no, it has to sit for another seven days before you can bring it back for the next council meeting. So it's actually 14 days and you won't get one in time. You won't, you will never hit the April 1st deadline. So this has to be read on the 7th, period, for second reading, for, for second, then it has to sit until it's done. There, there is no more change.
Mr. Gentile?
Yeah, to the chair, I mean, let's see, the last time there was a charter review committee is about three years ago. It used to be 14 in the charter, the holdover period. It did get reduced by charter amendment and voted the people to seven, seven days total. But I think.
Okay. All right, on that point, Councilman McCormick, and then I'll come back. Councilman McCormick.
I've got a point on a point on a point. I just want to make the point though, that for this leadership team.
Right.
Historically, there was no, in my time on council, there was no space for conversation around reconciliation. It was done somewhere without the consultation of members. So I do want to flag the fact that this leadership team is going towards transparency and open communication and dialogue in caucus rather than a couple of people in a back room somewhere, I don't know what happened. and dialogue in caucus rather than a couple of people in a back room somewhere, I don't know what happened. So Council President, myself, Councilwoman Santana have said, look, we want to, I don't know if you got a turn here, but this to be a transparent, uh, process among members. So I just want to highlight the improvement, uh, that we are implementing this year from past years.
And just, just before I go to Councilwoman Morris, thank you so much, Councilman McCormick, for stating that. And we do have our attorney here, who is Ms. Scalish. I know she's been watching diligently. The, the, the point that I'm trying to make is we are going to have deliberations, but I do want to be cautious that, um, we are on the clock. So I'm being transparent, I'm being open, but we are on the clock. And I want to make sure everybody knows that because I think between the administration, and I can't speak for them, and council, the biggest blunder that we could make is not getting reconciliation right. The biggest blunder we could make is not having a balanced budget submitted in well enough time. And none of us will have any sleep if we don't get this done in enough time that, um, it makes us look irresponsible or not make us look irresponsible, we will be irresponsible. So I want to make sure that we'll tighten that up. I do want to make sure, if I could, to, uh, Councilwoman Morris, that if we can have, uh, Ms. Scalish, if she can just make sure that she gives us a clear path of succession. Ms. Scalish.
I, I think, okay.
Let me see.
I, I think you all are on the same page now. You will reconcile on Friday and this weekend between yourselves and the administration. On Monday, you'll come back to Finance Committee and pass it out of Finance Committee.
With amendments.
With, with whatever amendments, whatever reconciliation you've done. The discussion is pretty much done then, right? It'll go to the floor on Monday night for second reading, um, and will be read on the floor, second reading. Under the Charter, it has to lay over for seven days. That's a Charter change. Um, but it has to lay over for seven days under the Charter, and you will not be meeting on the 13th, on the 14th, which is the following Monday. I ran down here, I'm out of breath, sorry. Uh, you won't be meeting on the 14th, but it has to lay over for seven days. That seven days is the, the next Friday. Um, because it has to lay over for seven days after publication. It's published on a Friday, which is, I think, the 11th. So that you will come back on the 21st, and that'll be the third reading, and that'll be when your budget passes. Does that make sense?
That's perfect.
Okay.
All right. Councilwoman Spencer?
Right. Thank you to everyone for creating space for this brief conversation and to our amazing staff here. Comparing past practices, I do, I do recognize I'm experiencing this year, this is my second budget. Last year was on Zoom, my first in-person budget. That reconciliation really wasn't an open collaborative process, so I'm already feeling and noting the change. My question comparing this year to prior years is, um, is there a reason we, we don't start the whole budgeting process a week earlier to allow a full week for reconciliation as opposed to a half day and then over the weekend? And, and I'm not saying we have to answer that on the spot, but it's an open question. I'm, I'm interested why that hasn't been the past practice.
I'm going to answer and tell you as President of Council, we won't be doing this and running up against the deadline again.
Okay.
We will be moving it up earlier. And to be honest with you, um, I tried to stay as close to tradition as possible so that everybody can get into a routine because we have been out for about two years for COVID. And now we're all getting used to it and we have a new administration and we have a new, um, council. Um, and I tried to just get in a regular routine, but we will be moving it up and doing some things different, um, this upcoming, uh, next year. But for this year, once again, I want to try to make sure that we're transparent, open, but I also want everybody to realize that we're on a timeline. And I also want to say this. I want to be fair to, uh, Mayor Bibb and his administration. This is their first budget. And I don't want to try to go in and totally reconfigure it because they need time, as they've been saying all day, to assess the departments, to see how they believe, um, their operation could run. And we want to give them that opportunity. But I am open to reconciliation comments. I just want everybody to realize, you may not get everything that you want. It won't be me overruling you, but I just want everybody to be cautious that we can't get carried away with every department getting $4 million and $5 million extra dollars. Okay?
Thanks. And then in response to my specific question, there's no, there is no rules-based reason why we are only allowing a couple of days for reconciliation, and that could be, we could change the timeline next year to allow more time.
We could change the timeline. Am I wrong, uh, Ms. Scalish? We could change the timeline. Um, you guys entrusted me as the President. I'm going to move the timeline up. I think others have asked if we could move it up, and I plan on doing it, okay? In the past, I do want to say, we had a lot of council members who have been through this tedious process before. Therefore, there were some things, we didn't have as much, um, uh, curiosity. And now that we have more curiosity, the hearings have lasted longer, they've been more in-depth. I think the public is really enjoying it because I keep getting comments every day about how inquisitive we are, and they really appreciate that. Um, but, um, I won't take that for granted next year. We will make sure we give ourselves more time. Ms. Moore?
I, I'm just going to add that I really look forward to the Cleveland Documenters and whatever they put together as a result of this conversation. I feel like they're going to make us a nice little flow chart for the public as well. So, um, I really want to thank everybody for this, um, clarification because the parliamentarian in me is, um, looking forward to being able to explain it both to ourselves and to the public better. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Hearing, um, Councilman Casey.
And then just for clarification, after we go through reconciliation, who's responsible then for the, for putting the final book together? Is it the administration or it would be you, you guys? And then you guys would have to present that final book back to council? And then that's the one that Finance will vote on on, on Monday, correct?
Go ahead, Mr. Mr. Cordy, please go ahead.
Uh, through the Chair of the Councilmen, we are responsible for putting together the final budget book, but that typically doesn't happen until late April. So what we are responsible for putting together is the amended ordinance. So after council is finished reconciling, then I have a very short order of time in order to put some strike-throughs and, um, and change numbers, put together a schedule of changes. That then has to go to the Law Department, and that's what they'll bring to you at 2 o'clock.
Okay, so we won't see an amended budget book, right? We'll just see the amended ordinance, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
All right. Um, Councilman Polensik. As everybody can see, nothing is going to be fast or quick in this council, so everybody might as well get used to it.
Mr. Chairman, we'll see the amended ordinance, but we'll also be given a handout of the amendments.
Yes.
So everybody will be able to see what those amendments are that are going to be to, what is it, 136?
Yes, uh, 148.
148, excuse me. Um, but I had a question to, uh, the, um, Mr. Gentile, the Comptroller. In your time here, can you remember, um, a time when we held a special meeting to deliberate on a budget?
To the Chair of the Councilperson, uh, I don't, I don't recall that, that happening. I mean, it could happen, but I, I don't.
Yeah, I was trying to drag my, my brain because, um, the, the fact that, um, because again, there, there has to be the layover. But that's based on our regular schedule of meetings on our, our, our regular Monday cycle. But I was trying to think, because I thought at ti- there was a time when we held, um, special meetings to deal with the budget because of, because of intense negotiations or, um, more discussions as it pertains to, um, changes or recommendations, so. But the seven-day layover is mandatory. That's a given. We all have to know that. And a budget has to be passed by April 1st. So, um, so, Mr. Chairman, I would hope at some point you would, uh, send us something or tell us some suggestions that we have on amendments. When do we get those into you?
I would like for you to get any amendments directly to Ms. Columbia and Mr. Titren. They're already working on pulling together a document for us to use as a starting point for our discussions.
Okay, thank you.
And once again, just because you put it on there, doesn't mean you're going to get it.
That's right.
So I just want to make sure everybody knows that. Um, we will listen and hear you out. But at the end of the day, we need to be responsible and we need to be accountable. So just want to make sure everybody knows that. Councilman Joe Jones, and once again, I do apologize, everyone. I have a longstanding commitment that I have to go and take care of. And, uh, Councilman Joe Jones, but Councilman McCormick is going to take over the floor.
Here we go. Councilman Jones, on, um, the process or are you on the auditor deductions?
Mr. Chairman, on the process.
Okay, go ahead.
And then again, I, I, you know, I'd, um, say kudos to, that our process is going to be different in terms of reconciliation, uh, as it, um, it wasn't the case, and you brought that out. I hope that some of the issues that, you know, the members are talking about, uh, they're given, uh, full consideration and weight on this side of the table, uh, so that, um, there's some discussion on the other side of the table. And, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, you know, some of the issues maybe, you know, in our reconciliations, maybe are we going to follow a voting rule? If the majority of members want a particular, um, item, say for an example, uh, if they wanted to increase Police Department to talk about how we changed the car plan in our communities to keep our citizens safe. That's as an example saying that we're not going to use that, but it's as an example, uh, will we have an opportunity to vote on that?
Yeah, so tomorrow's format, and I'll let the Council President, who will chair the meeting, establish all that tomorrow. But it's going to be in the form of a caucus for tomorrow. So again, I'll let the Council President tomorrow set out that format, but it will be in the form of a caucus.
Well, I would suggest, you know, that there's some, um, processes in play, uh, for the reconciliation portion of it. Um, as you are aware, uh, crime has overtaken my neighborhood. And, um, the carpooling plan and how we, we do the processes. And I know it's been crime throughout the city of Cleveland as a whole, uh, but we have to do something different than what we've been doing because what we have been doing is not working.
Okay, uh, Councilman Casey is requesting a point. Councilman Jones?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, he can have the floor.
Got it. Councilman Casey, go to the floor.
Um, and, and I'm sure Council President will, will reiterate this tomorrow, but I'm sure reconciliation, uh, Mr. Chairman, has everything to do with the budget, and I think later on in the year, we could, we could hash out philosophies and all that other stuff.
That's correct.
But I believe that it's just in regards to dollars and, and money.
To the, uh, Chief Philosopher Casey, yes.
Philosophically speaking, right?
Yes.
All right.
Uh, tomorrow will be about budget reconciliation. So, okay, and I also, you can hang if you want, uh, Chief Counsel Scalish, but we appreciate you and coming in with clarity. All right, we are moving on to transfers to other funds. Ms. Tilly?
To the Chair, we did read this one in already.
We did, wonderful. All right, we're moving on to other, did we do other administrative?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Let's go with that one.
Page 361, other administrative, 2021 unaudited, uh, 16,629,064. 2022 budgeted, 21,369,490. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chief. Can you please provide an overview of other administrative or whoever on the Finance Team?
To the Chair, uh, the other administrative is, uh, broken down into a cou- couple categories. The very top portion is, uh, training and professional dues. So these are organizations that the city, uh, is membership to. So you'll see the list there.
Yep.
Uh, and the amount we're budgeting, and that's their membership fee. Uh, in the center of the page are utilities. It says electricity, CPP. This is the streetlight bill.
Streetlights.
Yes, we pay CPP to provide the streetlight electricity.
361.
Other, um, contractual services, there's just the, uh, several different areas down there. The, uh, biggest couple are the.
I'm going to ask all members to pay attention to the contractual services so that I don't get a question about these. Can we please walk through these so that we don't have to re-ask what contractual services are? Thank you.
Okay, so for professional services, the 320,000 is, um, for our lobbyist, the Doer Group.
Lobbyist.
The lobbyist, the Doer Group. We have property rental and, one, page 361, through the Chair of the Councilmen. We have property rental of 2.8 million, and that's for the police leasing space for their headquarters. We pay the Justice Center tower maintenance. Um, that's for, uh, the, the, that property other than the police headquarters. So that's for predominantly the courts.
And that's a part of our lease agreement with the Justice Center, correct?
Yes.
Please proceed.
And that, those are the big ticket items as far as the expenses go.
Okay. So again, to the folks, uh, 361, the professional organizations in which the, the city's a part of, you'll recognize those as you read through. The middle part is our electric bill for the streetlights, the 64,000 across the city of Cleveland. And we just walked through the contractual services, which are in the third section. Questions on page 361. Councilman Jones?
Mr. Chairman, just a point of, um, uh, information. Can we get, um, on that, um, professional services? Is that, uh, when you say professional services, can you elaborate on that, Mr. Chairman, to the Director?
Through the Chair of the Councilmen, yeah, professional services is for our lobbying group, and I believe it's the.
No, it's changed.
Who is it?
Uh, historically, it was the Doer Group. Now it, it's changed. But that, that's the, um, lobby, lobbyist contract that the administration uses, is paid out of the, uh, out of this line item.
And, and so that's what that, that entire amount is for?
To the Chair of the Councilperson, um, I believe, yes, that's the lobbyists.
Can you, well, can you send that to us, who they are?
Can we please have the information on who that is and?
Yep. To the Chair of the Councilperson, we'll, we'll break out this line for you.
Thank you.
And then, Mr. Ch- Mr. Chairman, for the property rental, is that, because I know that the number has increased, and I think I'm looking at the right line item, but maybe I'm not. Is that, has that increased?
Can you speak to the increase in property rental financing?
Through the Chair of the Councilmen, I, I don't know what the, the monthly terms of the lease are. You'll see in 2019 that we first encumbered dollars for leasing space for the police headquarters of 2.4 million. That carried us into 2020. We encumbered a little bit more in 2021. And, uh, now we need to encumber the remaining balance so that we can get through 2022.
So, Mr. Chairman, then what I will request, because we don't know, and if, if you could just give us a breakdown of contractual, um, services all the way down, that entire section, from where it says contractual services all the way down to, to, um, uh, the Justice Center tower maintenance. What, you know, what is, what's all that and why? Break that down so we can get better.
So Councilman, you're looking for further description on those items, is that correct?
Yes, sir, and that's all.
Ms. Tilly, do you have that request?
And that's it, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. Additional questions on 361?
Yes.
Councilman Polensik.
Thank you.
And I, I look forward to receiving that information as well. Just on the other training and professional dues for the global Cleveland, could somebody provide us a breakdown of that as well? What services the city is receiving for that?
The Chair, we, we can get, we can get to that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Polensik. Ms. Tilly, please read restricted income tax.
Page 365, restricted income tax expenditures for 2021 unaudited, 53,511,821. 2022 budgeted, 53,590,756. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, uh, Ms. Tilly. Again, this is page 365, restricted income tax. Chief?
To the Chair, um, restricted income tax is one-ninth of the income tax collected. So in the Charter, uh, that was established that when we collect income tax, one-ninth goes into the restricted income tax. Restricted income tax can be used for debt service and capital needs of the city. So as, as we projected a flat, um, income tax, you'll see the revenue amount is, is pretty much consisted, consistent from the 2021 unaudited to 2022 budget. The bulk of, of that, as you will see at the very top, uh, the 39 million, that, that's that service, right, Chris?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's, 39 million is debt service in the first line item. Um, we're funding with 12 million in the budget for capital. And usually we'll use the restricted income tax for things that aren't feasible to bond. Things that have a shorter life, it's harder to bond if we're trying to buy a vehicle that only has a five-year life. It's not feasible to bond that. Um, and I'll take questions.
Thank you. Um, does this budget number 12362 under capital contain the annual allocation? Thank you, does this budget number, 12362 under capital, contain the annual allocation to council members for capital? Would that come out of RIT? I think it has in the past.
To the Chair of the Councilperson, I don't think that comes out of this number, that would have been a general fund allocation or a different capital allocation, but--
Are we sure that the annual ward-based infrastructure sum did not come out of here?
Let us double-check and get back with you. I'd rather make sure--
Ms. Tilly, can we ensure that wherever that came from, that if it's not in this budget, that that's a part of reconciliation? Do you understand which fund I'm talking about? Each council member each year had like $125,000 in capital dollars. Go ahead, if there's a response to that.
I just want to make sure, I'm clear on what you're talking about, because I just want to make sure we answer your question, when we got it. Is this the home repair amount? Okay.
No, no, there are two separate line items, we, council also has a capital line item, which we use for parks, road, we supplement our roads sometimes, so it's a separate item from the home repair, there are two of them, so we've had it for probably three years, four years, something like that, so just, we'll put that as a point to ensure wherever that comes out of, that that's in this budget. Councilman Mike Polensik.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just want to revert back to a moment, because I skipped over it on page 362, under the third line, third line item down, grant revenue, is that the ARPA funds, what are those two dollar amounts there?
Chief?
Through the Chair to the Councilman, yeah, the $2021 dollar amount is the ARPA funds, and in 2020, that was from the CARES Act.
That's the CARES Act, okay, and that's what we actually have, we had in hand.
That's the, through the Chair to the Councilman, the amount of revenue that we receive from the feds.
Okay, now wait a minute, I have another question here.
And put in the general fund.
So, as a point of clarification, Councilman, that is the proportion of ARPA and CARES that we use to supplement our general fund, is that correct?
Right, to the Chair, the CARES money was pretty much, for the most part, put in there, the ARPA money, yes, that's the amount, the rest is still in the--
For revenue loss purposes.
Revenue loss purposes, yes.
Okay, so then, the 41 million as anticipated, that's the entire dollar amount you're anticipating for property tax receipts this year?
Chief?
Chair of the Councilman, yes.
Okay, okay, and then the, the, okay, so then the state and local government fund, that's what they keep cutting from the state, correct?
Through the Chair of the Councilman, historically, they have cut that since 2011.
Okay.
That's what Mike DeWine finds in the couch cushions.
Right, and then the transfers in, what is that one?
Through the Chair of the Councilman, this is one of our special revenue funds that, we have funds from our joint economic development agreements, we own land, when Eaton Corporation moved--
So that's out there, Harbor, et cetera, out there?
Chagrin Highlands.
Chagrin Highlands, okay, okay, and then, going back to the page 365, under revenues, the interest earnings and interest income, since, from 2019, there's a significant drop, yet the dollar amount, the income tax, as the, you know, pretty, pretty normal, or I should say, we're averaging, why such a drop in interest income from 2019?
Yeah, through the Chair to the Councilman, so in 2020, when COVID hit--
Right.
And the economy went into a bit of a tailspin, the Fed dropped interest rates effectively to zero.
But there's that, there was that much of a drop from 19?
Yes, yeah, so you could have obtained interest rates for, you know, a deposit of this magnitude of above 1%, 1.5%, and it dropped to zero.
So, again, so on $53 million, $53 million, our earned interest income is $20,000.
Chief?
Yeah, to the Chair of the Councilperson, yeah, the total for the year is 53 million, you know, that, obviously that flows in during the year, so we weren't sitting on 53, but yes, yes, over the entire time, that is the amount that's allocated back, interest rates were really low.
Man, we'd be, you might be better off buying lottery tickets here, let me tell you, better chance.
I don't think that would go through the ethics officer.
Through the Chair of the Council, just one note on this, you know, we, this hits us in two different directions, you know, one, we earn very little income on deposits, but it also benefits us when we're issuing debt, when interest rates are so low, so it's, you know, there is a give and a take.
Thank you. All right, and I just, I got to note too, that the, our individual ward-based infrastructure dollars may be within the capital budget, but we are going to get confirmation on that, as to where that sits prior to tomorrow. All right, we are going to move on, so for purposes of, for purposes of freeing up as much as tomorrow as possible, we have the Office of Quality Control and Performance Management here today, that is originally scheduled for tomorrow, they have been patiently and diligently waiting for us in the corner over there. So, again, we are at, my goal is to get you all out of here before 5 o'clock, that's a goal, it's an aspiration, but again, by hearing them today frees up additional time tomorrow, to allow for additional time for conversation amongst council, so we are going to read into the record, the Office of Quality Control and Performance Management, Ms. Tilly.
Page 71, Quality Control and Performance Management, interim Director Sabra T. Scott. Salaries and wages on page 72, 2021 unaudited, $799,352, 2022 budgeted, $1,160,286. Total expenditures also on page 72, 2021 unaudited, $1,081,210, 2022 budgeted, $1,608,284. Staffing on page 74, number of employees, December 2021, 10, budgeted for 2022, 15. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Director, please, any opening comments? Yeah, and turn that mic on, please, thank you.
Okay, yes, Mr. Chairman, I do. First, I'd like to introduce our staff, our two supervisors, managers from our department. We have Randy Hill, who's our manager of our Quality Control Section, and manages two quality control inspectors. We have Henry Legonzat, he is our program manager for the entire department, and our entire staff of 12, and we have been in existence since the city stat years, which many council people remember the city stat model, and since that time, we have, 2017, we were incepted into the office of the mayor's, Mayor's Office of Quality Control and Performance Management. So I'd like to tell you a little bit more--
Thank you, and Director, before we go, I do want to recognize Chief Bradford-Davy, who has joined us as well in the room. Thank you, Director, please proceed.
Excellent, and thank you, and so we report to our new Chief of Strategy, Bradford-Davy, and we have been able to share understandings about what our office do, and even begin to work on some projects and initiatives to kind of show our capacity and ability to work within the mayor's priorities and align our visions with him, so it's been a really great experience in a very short period of time, and we're very grateful and thankful for his leadership. I would read the mission statement, but it is available in the books, I'll save some time by not reviewing that again, so kind of go right to it. We'll talk about our core program activities. QCPM is an internal resource for the City of Cleveland departments to define strategic objectives, incorporate best practices, perform systems and data analysis, improve processes, and inspect the quality of service delivery to the citizens of Cleveland. QCPM has four core programs designed to assist departments with maximizing performance and service delivery. Those areas are assessment and evaluation, quality control, data analytics and monitoring, performance improvement. Our staff works cross-functionally to assess processes and evaluate programs and operations. Once those steps are complete, we recommend to facilitate process improvement strategies. In 2021, QCPM analysts designed an emergency response process map and data flow diagram for the Division of Fire. We developed surveys, conducted programs, observations, and evaluated new programming for the Mayor's Office of Prevention, Intervention, and Opportunity for Youth and Young Adults. We developed, for the Department of Public Health, a COVID-19 Response Team organizational chart, and Wellness Checks Procedures Process Map. QCPM's quality control inspectors inspect closed service requests received from the 311 call center, City Works Work Order Management System, and the Mayor's Action Center. Our inspectors staffed vaccine point of dispensing on and off-site locations for the Department of Health, we inspected 1,074 closed service request cases, we submitted 926 referrals for infrastructure and/or vacant or occupied properties that require service or assessment. Our staff works with city departments to proactively identify and mitigate process inefficiencies. These process improvements are often embedded with quality control procedures. QCPM staff tracked the vaccine distribution and inventory, and staff deployment costs, created logistic and schematic plans for off-site locations, supervised and staffed the Department of Health's mobile pod dispensing locations, created electronic telework accountability process systems with guidance package for the Department of Human Resources, collaborated with the Division of Fire to assist with achieving accreditation from the Commission on Fire Accreditation International. One of QCPM's core competencies is data monitoring and analytics. Our team helps improve the department's data collection and validation processes, and links analytic software to departmental data. We developed COVID-19 cost tracking spreadsheets, tested, analyzed, and trained health department staff on the Ohio Departments of Health's Vaccine Management System, prepared quarterly emergency response time reports for the Division of Fire that calculates total response time, gained open-based connectivity, data connectivity to Exela, City Works, CAD system, computer-aided dispatch, and many other systems and softwares throughout the city. We have also analyzed GIS mapped and prepared quarterly and year-end reports for the Environmental Crimes Task Force. The Mayor's Office of Quality Control and Performance Management will continue to build on its core competencies expressed by our existing mission and our objectives in those four areas of assessment and evaluation, quality control, data monitoring and analytics, and performance improvements. However, we look forward to working with our new Chief, Bradford-Davy, as our Strategy Officer, to align our priorities and to create a knowledge-based, data-driven environment that fosters innovation and systems change. The utilization of data analytics, business process improvements, and the strong competencies of our QCPM team will position the Mayor's Office of Quality Control and Performance Management to meet the challenge of modernizing, streamlining, and improving processes. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Director, appreciate that, and Chief, you are more than, we got a seat up here for you, my man, come on up, step on up, thank you, so I've got two opening questions, and then I will pass it off to my colleagues. Director, first and foremost, and actually, I think, you know, Chief, if you want to speak to this as well, I'm going to open it up to you, but we've heard a lot during, you know, the budget hearings about the new administration really looking at the whole system, and how do we, as a city, you know, better understand where investment needs to go, where changes need to be made, so how does this department fit in, so I understand you diligent in outlining the specific work that the department has done, how does this department fit into that work? That being, taking a look at the whole bureaucracy to better understand, you know, where we need to go as a city, where resources are needed, where they're not, where technology can be infused, the work that we've been, has kind of been the umbrella of the conversation of being a transitional budget, how does this department fit into that work?
The current work, or the current priorities?
No, I'm talking about moving ahead, like--
Okay, how do we move ahead? I think it's really been great, because we have, first off, had a lot of engagement with our new Chief of Strategy, and I believe that by us sharing some of our processes and procedures, and being asked, what are the things that our office need to allow us to have the capacity and/or more resources to be more effective with working with our departments? Over the years, we have worked with at least nine departments, 11 divisions, and many other entities throughout the city, and we have learned a lot, either about their technology or about the resources that they may lack or need, and we've been able to share that in a very short period of time with our Chief. We look forward to being able to, through our strategic plan and planning along with the Mayor's Tracker, and his transition report, to develop the future, very quickly, of where we can go, what we can offer, not only at this quarter, but in the next two to three quarters before the year begins in 2023. I think so far, we're on the right track, we also have been working through 311, so it's been kind of interesting to kind of, throughout all the hearings here, some of your comments on 311, so we have created the opportunity to kind of assess it from a different perspective, I think, in order for us to help them with that, and along with IT, we are also working along with the West Side Market, currently, with Jessica Trivisano, so we are looking at some tracking for not only receipts and collection, but also maintenance, and how they are keeping track of those work orders, so there's a lot that we've already gotten into in a very short period of time, but it's also been based on some of the experiences that we have had with the departments over this time, that helps us be able to create a more strategic plan for how we can modernize and streamline processes very quickly.
Thank you, appreciate that, and Chief, do you want to add anything to that?
Thank you, I'll only add that part of the next step from the 100-day tracker and the transition document is really to think about, what are the key performance indicators across the enterprise that we need to measure and communicate, not to be punitive, to really understand where we need to get better, where we need to spend more resource, over-index, and improve, and so it's going to be exciting to use all of the superpowers in this office to really leverage that data, and be more responsive, and to be more resident-centric.
Thank you, so Chief, this department reports to you now, so as you and the mayor and council and others set that strategy for the future of the city, and I'm just trying to get some clarity, this department will support that vision in data tracking and monitoring and analysis, is that what I'm hearing out of?
Very much so, and they already spend so much time with the 311 system, which I know has been a part of today's conversation, and so, really, being that data capacity for the city, the city stat arm, is going to be an important function for the administration.
Okay, thank you. Director, on page 74, on your staff totals, can you please speak to the need for the two additional positions, one systems analyst and another business process analyst?
Sure, so those are the, over the years, we have found that one of the areas that we really needed to gain more resources in, was for actually gathering the data off of many technological, technical systems, and so this is a skill that we had not had, we have it in our program manager, Henry Legonzat, and one of our other staff persons, Maninder Singh, who come with the BPA experience, but we also need to make sure that we, you know, really strengthen that area, just in case there's ever any matriculation, we don't want to have a gap, because now we are actually picking up more systems than we have had in the past, and have more, and have the capacity to actually utilize them in order to help us, you know, pull data, analyze the data, and create, actually, I'll use their terms, I don't know how to do it, but some sequential query language experts, so that's where we're going, and we really want to use that as part of the growth of this department. The other positions that are new are the administrative-- The other positions that are new are the Administrative Manager and Assistant Director, and those are going to be very, very good with our staff because it will allow us the opportunity to concentrate on how we engage these departments moving forward and how we take on the new challenges that we'll have, going through the new priorities that will be coming our way through the Mayor's Transition Report and creating the key performance indicators for the tracker. And so this will allow our director to work directly with Program Manager and Manager and allow me the opportunity to really continue to work with our chief in developing and understanding other best practices in other cities and other departments and offices that function quite like ours.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to move to questions now. I've got Councilman Brian Casey. You want to go?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, to the interim director, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Who is the Executive Assistant to the Mayor?
I am. Interim.
Okay, so have we gotten any closer, Mr. Chairman, to getting the opinion from the Law Department about directors with our charter and working titles of executive assistants and directors? Because I know directors are in the charter and executive assistants and chiefs are not.
So I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay.
I don't know the answer to that question. I don't know, Chief, if you have a response to that, but I don't know the answer to that question.
To the Chair, through the Councilman, or through the Councilman, through the Chair, to the Councilman. It's been a long wait.
It's getting late.
Yeah. It's Taylor Week.
We can, we can look into that. It sounded as if there's, has there been an inquiry made on the council side on this question?
I think it was made early on.
And Councilman, is this pertaining to the titles in the book versus what's allowable? Is that kind of the general question?
Right. We know that by charter, each department's have to have directors, right? But then there was this robust conversation about all these, that when we got the Mayor's Office, right, there's executive assistants within there, but now we're finding a bunch of other executive assistants in other departments, and it turns out that they're chiefs or they're working titles or however it's, you know, however it's, it was, it's being portrayed.
All right. Please introduce yourself and if you've got a response to this line of questioning. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Council. My name is Elise Harawill. I am the Chief Administrative Officer. I was prepared to answer that question through the Chair to Councilman Casey. So if you look at Charter, Chapter 27, Section 126, there are unclassified and classified definitions of positions.
Correct.
The Mayor's Office are all unclassified. There are three categories: executive assistants, secretary to the mayor, and special assistants. I'm doing this without my book. So when you look at the Mayor's Office and the Mayor's Budget, the next offices that you are going through
Right.
are actually all under the Mayor's Office. So the executive, the directors are more like working titles, but the administrations previous before us have always used the term executive assistant with respect to the leaders of those divisions.
So, and I think, Mr. Chairman, to whomever, in the spirit of transparency, right, which is something we've been hearing for the last year and a half, I believe that what we should just have is whoever, whatever that title is, you're the director, interim director, right? In the book, it should read director, right? It shouldn't, it shouldn't look like we're, I don't want to use the term hiding, but I want to just be transparent so that we don't, I know that, you know, Ms. Scott is the interim director, right? But we don't see that title in the book. We don't see that position in the book. We see it as something else, right? So, and we've had this conversation a couple of times over the last two years, over the last eight days, going on nine days. So when we come tomorrow, you know, we're going to see, you know, the executive assistants to the mayor out of his office, but then we're also see this whole other chunk of executive assistants to the mayor, which in our world, right, they're just directors. We've always called them directors or chiefs. And with all due respect, please don't roll your eyes at the table.
Oh, no, no.
Please don't do that, okay? This is our, this is our time, right? So however we're going to be going forward with this, you know, we call you director, right? We don't call you executive assistant to the mayor. So what we're looking for is just the clarification of who's where within the pecking order.
So is it, if I can just, for clarity for my purposes, the title executive assistant to the mayor, is that in the book because that's what's defined in the charter versus a director, which is a working title? Let me, please?
If I could, through the Chair to Councilman Casey, and please, I was not rolling my eyes. I was pondering that I believe that the reason it has always been executive assistant is that's actually the legal definition. And so when you're using the classification, it's the same reason you'll see all these assistant managers, all these different terms. And again, I was going to get into this more tomorrow.
Well, we can, we can wait till tomorrow, then.
But, but the idea, yeah, the idea is that I think you have the legal definitions used in this budget, but then throughout the years, there have been these working titles because the working titles are actually more modern than what exists in the ordinances.
Okay, okay. So, and I appreciate that. We will dive into all those fun facts tomorrow. So I appreciate the line of question, though. Additional questions on the Office of Quality Control and Performance Management?
No, I just want to thank the executive assistant to the mayor. She's a former, she's a former councilperson who sat on this side of the table, so she's got, she's got a lot of, yeah, I got your old seat.
Yeah.
She's, she's put a lot of years into, into the city, and you've always done a yeoman's job, and I just wanted to personally thank you for everything you've done and that you'll continue to do for the city. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Kevin Conwell.
Thank you very, very much. I like this department. Matter of fact, I think that City Council really should be doing the same thing you guys are doing also, that we should be, because we're funders, and we should be evaluating 311, we should be, because really, it's our programs, and we should be evaluating what you submit, what you give back to us. For example, with the Health Department, with all these departments that come back to us, we should have some kind of valuation process because we have oversight of what's going on. And sitting back listening to you, I want to say council lady because you look like a council lady to me, you know? You still have the council lady look, Director. Sitting back thinking, we should be doing that also. I know that John James and I, in fact, we were working on it this summer, to the Chair, to the Director, to create something like this. But we would need to work with your department, and you can't speak for the mayor, but it would be great for the mayor to work with council so that we can evaluate our programs better and just probably sit that over. You probably can't comment on it, you know, if you can, but you probably can't.
Director, do you want to respond?
Well, I'm sure if there's a discussion, any conversation, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, to the Councilmen to share ideas. We have met in the past with your research staff, John James and Joe Titan, and I met Brooke, and I haven't met Ms. Tilly today. So, you know, we have talked, and I think that there are ways that we can share information and collaborate moving forward to the Councilman.
Because, you know, to my colleagues, we should be doing matrix. We should be measuring it. I mean, we have oversight. How can you have oversight if you're not evaluating what's going on? You got to evaluate and have, so we know where we're going. And John James and I, just, I was in a back meeting with him, I want to say council lady, Director. I was in a back meeting discussing that with him when I left the table. I said, we got to get this oversight back together again. And he mentioned your name, and he was going to reach out to you again. So we have already reached out to you.
Yes, yes, and we have met, not recently, however, I actually thought he had retired, but, Mr. Chairman, to the Council, I'm sorry, I'm glad he's still around, so certainly will look forward to speaking with him and...
He's a consultant to the, to the Chair, to the Director. So, you know, I was back there asking him some questions, and so we are looking to do that with oversight. And even with policy, one thing about policy is, you know, former council lady, it can shift on you, so you got to manage it. 311, Code Red, reverse 911, all those kind of things. Moving back to one program, and then I'll yield, Play it Forward Cleveland. You've been monitoring that program, and how is that program doing?
Director?
Mr. Chairman, to the Councilman, yes, our office observed many of the virtual programs through the PIO programming at the Neighborhood Recreation Resource Centers. We know that that is one of the most liked programs. I really don't have the data in front of me, but it definitely is one of the programs that I remember our team coming back saying that the students and participants really loved.
All right, thank you very much. What I want to do, I have to talk with my colleagues, to the Chair is my last piece, on this summer, is to try to get some dollars for children to study the arts at the Music School Settlement, at the Rainy Institute of Music, at Cow, you know, because children, they need to see success every day. They need to be exposed to, to the arts, and it'll probably fall under your department to evaluate it also. And when you evaluate, are you guys using, so what do you use to evaluate?
We, Mr. Chair, and to the Councilmen, we create surveys and conduct onsite observations, and we also have very quick customer feedback type products that we use for various age groups so that we're making sure we capture everybody's opinion. Then we bring that information back and, you know, put it together and analyze it and either a spreadsheet, in some cases, Survey Monkey can, you know, kind of pump out the information, the reports that we need, and go back and turn that information into the PIO office now for the future of PIO. I can't tell you where we're going with them now in the, this year. So we, they will be at the table tomorrow, and if there's any more work for us to do along with them, we will be ready to do that.
Do you have, you guys host meetings with the managers, say, weekly or monthly, to tell them what they're doing right or what they're doing wrong? Looking at your, you do, I'm looking, I'm assuming you use pre-testing and post-testing.
Mr. Chairman, to the Councilman, in the beginning of the development of the trauma informed care model in our recreation centers, we worked very closely with the Division of Recreation and their staff to kind of, to pre and post-test to gain a better understanding of where the staff would be. However, as the PIO program developed over time, that responsibility was shifted from our department to their chief at that time, Tracy Martin Thompson, and back over to Commissioner Sam Gissen-Danner. So we were there in the beginning, helped to do a lot of the research and work along with a lot of the not-for-profits, Case Western and other people, groups and agencies that were participating in trying to form, elate this type of model here in our recreation centers, but since that time, we have kind of been removed.
I can see that. Here's, here's last, the Health Department, and I just was happy with, with the Health Department. Are you, to the Chair, to the Director, working with them? Would they do, i.e. outreach? I.e., they have a lot of different programming, and they receive a lot of grant dollars. So you evaluate their grant dollars, are they hitting their benchmarks, dealing with the lead issue? Are they hitting their benchmarks? For example, two years ago, we lost funding for HIV. I was highly upset with that, highly upset with losing dollars for HIV. So you guys come in and evaluate them, tell them where they're going before they get there, or are they moving in the right direction?
And again, initially, when we started with the Department, Mr. Chairman, to the Councilman, Department of Health, we were looking at some of the grant, grants that they had received and monitoring and evaluating those, as well as some of their other programs. That was more through our core services activity. Our core service activities have slowed down since COVID because that's where we really work with departments to develop their metrics and then, you know, kind of monitor and track where they are with their key performance indicators to see how they were doing. When COVID hit, we actually did become the other arm to the Health Department to actually help them staff all the, well, we call them pods, which are points of dispensing for the vaccine. So we really just slowed down with the Department of Health through the mobile pods and stationary pod locations about this summer. So we, our work with health has really been all about vaccine distribution, the inventory of it, the logistics to dispensing the vaccine, going out and marketing it. We also created, again, the logistics and schematic diagrams for other locations outside of the City of Cleveland where we were also providing this vaccine to the community. So our actual role with the Health Department changed over this last year. Moving into 2023, as the Chiefs and Cabinet assess the departments, as a lot of discussion was spoke today, we will find out what our role will be moving forward.
Yeah, we need your help with COVID. As you know, I walk the neighborhood, I drop letters, try to let the residents know, and now as the Health Chair, I have to think macro and how, you know, where we at, but I can't move unless we know where we at. Even in a ward, you take a ward, and you might say in a certain area cluster, they're doing well here, but they're not doing well there, and I need to know why. Do I need to knock on doors, you know, how to get it done? And I can't figure it out unless you guys evaluate it.
Right. I think, Mr. Chair, to the Councilman, many of our departments now have, you know, either start to staff up and put in place medical, especially with the Department of Health, put in place the staff that they need to help guide them toward their goals and objectives and so that they can meet them. So I would think that, you know, if you, you know, this is just me feeling pretty positive about where they're going. I think if you give them a little bit of time, you'll find that they'll be able to kind of work with you as the Health Chair, of Chair of the Health Committee, to, to give you a better understanding of how their successes are going to be monitored and tracked.
Did you do, to the Chair, a survey analysis? For example, you have different, you know, Asians might not take the shot because of this, or African-Americans might not take shots because of that, and then we know which direction to go through the Chair?
Mr. Chair, to the Councilman, are you asking, is that type of data available?
Yes.
Yes, it is available. You could get it through the Health Department. They, they have their, they're tied into information systems at the state level, and that information can be pulled from the data, databases that will give you a better idea of the demographics of, of the vaccine, inventory, distribution, and age groups.
I want to yield, because we could talk forever and ever on this, and the Chair's doing a good job pushing this right along. However, I'm going to meet with, with the Vice Chair, Slife, so that we can put together some plans on how to execute on what you just narrated to me. Thank you very, very much, Director. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
You are welcome, Councilman, and you've still got a minute 30, but we're going to put that time back on the table. Councilman Harch.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, to the interim director, I noticed that your budget request has increased 60%, which roughly matches the Mayor's Office increase. But I thought the more striking number was that the budget request has doubled since 2019. So how many people were in your department in 2019?
So if I can just have a point of clarity, Director, I'm sorry, but this is, we're talking actual to budget, is that correct?
I'm talking about the 2019 actual $800,000 budget to the 2022 proposed 1.6 million. And the question through the Chair to the Director is, how many people were in the department in 2019?
Well, I don't have that document in front of me, even though this, Mr. Chairman... Well, I don't have that document in front of me, even though this, Mr. Chairman to the Councilman, I don't have that document in front of me, and my staff person probably has it, who's behind me. And I told him, there would be no reason why we'd need that information. If you could tell me where I was in 2019, I could tell you how I got to where I am in 2021.
I'm sorry, were you not with the City Director? I'm confused, I don't get it.
Yeah, so I don't have that information in front of me, Mr. Chairman, yeah. I have the 2021, 2022 budget and my staff.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, the joint team people in the department now.
The eight hundred thousand, three thirty-nine?
I'm sorry?
The eight hundred thousand, three thirty-eighty-nine, is that what you're?
Yes, ma'am.
Versus?
The one point six million requested for next year.
In 2019, what I don't have is the staffing in front of me for 2019.
I'm just curious, were there?
Yeah, I just have the numbers, I don't have the staffing.
We're, we're looking for fifteen people next year, were there seven and a half people in 2019, that's why the budget's doubled?
Yeah, we probably were in transition, uh, because we really came together in 2017 as a new Office of Mayor's, Office of Quality Control and Performance Management, and hiring started to take place at that time in developing the classifications for the type of people we're going to bring to the office. I could only think at that time, as we had to be in transition, of hiring new people to come on board. And we can provide that information for you.
Thank you. Calton, our finance team has a point on that.
Through the Chair to the Councilman, I can provide that information to you. This is a fairly new division. This happened after Issue Thirty-two, which increased our income tax to another half percent. So that, uh, this division, I believe, was initially established either 2017 or 2018. So 2019 was still in the period of ramping up staff.
Okay, I'm just curious, because, you know, the, Mr. Chairman, the, the whole, uh, the whole budget's a eight percent increase, and when you see a department that does sixty percent, that's, that's notable. Um, so, uh, through the Chair to the Director, you are, uh, under here, under the administrators as the Executive Assistant to the Mayor, and you're looking to bring on an administrative manager and assistant director, but through the Chair, neither of those are Chief Davies, correct?
None of the staff, not those two, no.
Okay, so through the Chair, the Chief Davies here is still on the Office of the Mayor's over on page, uh, sixty-four.
Which we're hearing tomorrow, right?
Okay, we'll get to tomorrow. Okay, um, last question then, through the Chair to the Director, um, Interim Director, I, I'm a dashboard person, I love metrics, I love knowing how we know if we're getting to where we want to go, and I really appreciate the work Quality Control can do to help those other departments achieve those goals. It's very, very important that we maximize efficiencies, and I, I see that as your department. How do we measure you? I, I heard Councilman Conwell sort of asked that as well, but what are the metrics that we use to, 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 to measure your department against, you know, a doubling budget and all those?
So, Mr. Chairman to the Councilmen, uh, we have had our old metrics, and we are going to develop a new set of metrics based on our new set of priorities and objectives with the set, uh, with our new leadership. So, yes, and we have, uh, been measured over time, um, uh, but, uh, that information really has not been made available to the council. It was more of an in-house document, but I'm sure now that there is a different approach to how our office engages not only departments, but also, um, through our leadership, other leaders, that information will become available.
Well, yeah, so to the Chair, to, Mr. Tilly, could we get that information from them? The intern, I mean, we're allowed to see it, correct?
It's a public record, it's gotta be, so. Ms. Tilly, do you have that request?
I'm sorry?
I'm just asking, confirming that our folks have that request.
That's all, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilman, appreciate that. And, and one thing I will just note as we go through this, I think for next year, whether it's a part of this book or whatever, having the twenty-one, well, the previous year budgeted number, I think would be helpful. I don't know if that's a standard budgeting practice or how this is put together, because what we look at is actual, actual unaudited budget, there's no historic budget figure to understand the apples to apples. So I think, as we think through next year's conversation to do that, I've got Councilman Mike Polensick.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, my humble colleagues, and to the Director, and to the, um, Brad, Mr. Davy, your, your title is again, what is it?
Chief.
Chief Strategy Officer.
Chief Strategy. Okay. Um, here is my challenge and my concern, and I'm going to bring up exactly what I brought up last year at this time. We have this department, which I had assumed, and I'll direct to, um, the, um, Chief Administrative Officer as well, I assumed was going to be somewhat like the Congressional Office of Budget and Management, was somehow going to report back to us as to efficiencies, effectiveness, issues, problems, what we need to collectively work on. In my two years here, um, and I've been here a lot longer than that, um, I have yet to ever get a report or a document or anything from this department, yet we see the meltdown of the West Side Market, we see problems within the division, within Public Works, various divisions, waste collection, um, shade trees, um, I could go on, go on, go on, go on. Yet, no report back to us as to, yep, we, we, council members, we need more equipment, we've seen this deficiency, this is working well, this is not working. So, I, someone's got to explain to me why I would vote as a member of this Finance Committee to keep this department. I, I mean, so, no, I'm not through yet. Why I would vote to keep this when I don't know what they do? I do not know what they do. And so, and, and I hope that there's people within the administration, because I, you know, I've, because this is something, if I was just saying this today, it'd be one thing, I said it last year at this time, and no effort by the previous administration, unless my colleagues, if I'm, if I'm incorrect, unless my colleagues have gotten some types of reports or updates as it pertains to, to oversight and overview, but see, I'm, I'm almost, or I'll go to the other extreme, where the council takes control of it, takes control of this whole section, and we set up the oversight. So then, so we can have an honest opinion and honest, um, assessment as to what's working in this city and, and what isn't. Because I, I'm not, um, I'm beyond the point of just plowing money into departments and divisions and not seeing any end result. And I mean, I'm telling you right now. So if, if some of my, one of my colleagues can produce a report or document from this area, saying, this is what we have found, this is what we're suggesting to the admin, we had suggested to the administration or to City Council, but, I, so I'm asking myself, why would I support one point six million dollars for Quality Control and Performance Management when, to my knowledge, that's just me speaking, I haven't seen any? So, I'd like to hear from the Chief Administrative Officer, I'd like to hear from the Director of Finance, I'd like to hear from Mr. Davy, and I'd like to hear from my dear colleague, Sabre Scott, because unless, I knew there were, I know there was a lot of things that transpired, and I'm going to be very blunt about it. I know there were people told that they could not talk to members of City Council, that they could not engage council, and I've had people tell me, Councilman, we can't talk to you, we can't tell you this. Now, I would hope as of January first, that crap went out the door, that that crap went out the door. So, I want to hear from somebody from the Bib administration as to what the new policy is, because if, if not, in reconciliation, I'm going to urge that we, we take the one point six, and we create our own operation of real budget and management, um, like we thought there would be, and some reporting back to us, and yet nothing happens. So be my guest, whoever wants to join in.
So, Councilman, and please, everything through the Chair, um, you've tagged four people, so we're going to start here. Chief, if you'd like to respond to that. And pull the mic to you, yeah, yeah.
Thank you. To the Chair, to Councilman Polensick, um, I'm just going to briefly address, uh, the philosophy of the Bib administration. It is not the philosophy of this mayor to tell our staff not to talk to council people. I cannot speak to previous administrations, uh, I can only speak to where we are going in the future. I'm going to defer to my colleague, Chief Davy, to explain the quintessential importance of having quality control, uh, and I do believe that you should be entitled to see those reports, um, and perhaps inquire into specific areas that you might want a report on quality review. Um, with that, if I may, I'm going to defer to Chief Davy.
Chief Davy, you're up, number two.
Through the Councilman to the, uh, councilperson. Let me express unequivocally, uh, that I share your opinion. Not only should we be, um, assessing and determining whether or not our departments and our programs are operating successfully, we should be rigorously evaluating them and determining how we change course. But we can't do that without thoughtful, well-capacitated, full staff of smart, competent, and capable arbiters to go into departments and figure out how to do better. We can't speak about whether or not, um, the previous administration allowed those communication tactics, um, to, to trickle down to this body. But what we can say is communication needs to be a major function of any office, particularly one that is evaluating our systems and programs. So one of the things that we look forward to is interesting and engaging dashboards, not only dashboards that can be understood and internalized by members of council and the administration, but to the folks that we answer to, our residents. We require processes that are thoughtfully and clearly articulated, so folks know how to engage with municipal government. We need to be able to answer your calls to, why did my resident, or why is this process not working? And so know that part of this strategy is to get to a better future state. Uh, I will just briefly describe some of the processes that we've gone through to get there. We have done, we heard this body's calls, this body's calls, um, about 311 and snow removal. And we immediately, immediately sat down as a leadership team and said, we need a thorough analysis of the 311 calls that came in over the last month and over the last year, and let's determine how well we're doing. Where are we deficient, and where are we doing great? It's also important to note that while we have not publicized some of this work, um, this, this department is instrumental, instrumental in getting funding, right, and accreditation for our, uh, most critical departments, particularly fire. When I saw Director Scott and her team's, um, analysis of the Fire Department, I recognize why they've been successful in their accreditations and their funding. If we are guilty of anything, it is of not committing to broad communication. And I can tell you that, should we receive a blessing in this budget, uh, that is something that we will address immediately. Thank you.
Go ahead, Chief.
Through the Chair to the Councilman, I don't know that I have anything to add on that point, other than, you know, I think a lot of the themes that you heard Chief Davy hit on are consistent with those that, that we've been talking about at the table, about really doing the rigorous work we, that is necessary to ensure that we operate at a high level and serve our residents.
Okay, um, and Councilman, I'm going to pause you for a minute here. I've got one, two, three members of Finance, okay. Madam Clerk, without objection, I'd like to appoint Councilwoman House, Moore, and sort of Gray as members of the Finance Committee pro-ta. Well, he got it last time. So, without objection, members of the committee. Thank you. Um, all righty. Director, would you like to respond with the Councilman? I'm going to give you some of your time back for that as well. Yes. Director?
Mr. Chairman to Councilman Polensick, um, as the Director of the Office, and having been at this table since the establishment of the Mayor's Office of Quality Control, and understanding the misunderstandings of the work that we have done, I've always found that no matter how write or read what it is that we've done, without actually having that piece or that document in your hand or something you can see before you, it's hard to understand the work that our staff has done and how they have, those who are not here as well, who I know are watching, how they have helped departments to meet their goals and objectives, and maybe not in a way that's public, but in a way that we know has been helpful and resourceful and useful to them. And I could not say it better than...
For a second time?
Our Chief. And can actually say that, I can appreciate the stance that he has taken, the support that he has already given us, and the faith in allowing us to move forward as an office that can and will be and is so critical to the future of this city. And I often tease with my staff, and I talk about Medicare eligibility, because that's the line I'm going on, not far away from getting Medicare. But I've never been prouder to hear the support that we just received for those who are far away from attaining Medicare eligibility, from attaining families, from raising children, living in the city, understanding the challenges, having the opportunity to come to an office like ours and learn the language, learn the processes, may have started off just knowing how to work in Excel, but coming out understanding that you can actually go in and learn how to do queries and write language through computer systems. I'm excited. I feel bad that we have not been able to meet the Councilman's goals, but I feel so proud that we have someone who has actually sat here and spoke about what we actually do.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, my humble colleagues, and to Ms. Scott Sabre. Here's the, here's my request. Can you, can you point to one report or document that's ever been submitted to City Council from your shop?
Director?
Mr. Chairman to the Councilman, last year during the, if not last year, because I can't remember, it was virtual, and I'm not sure if we sent it to Joe and John James, uh, some of the documents that we said we sent, but definitely the year before that, I just can't remember based on COVID, but we have sent documents, and most of them were relative to PIO or the Department of Health, and even maybe, um, the Fire Department, it just depends on what I spoke to them, but yes, we have sent some. And now prepared to send, uh, other documents for your review.
Okay, I, Mr. Chairman, my humble colleague, I've never seen one report. I don't know if anyone else who is here who has seen one report. And so, if I'm hearing from, um, Mr. Davy, that you're telling us it's a new day, new time, um, the proof will be in the pudding. If this, this department, um, is supposed to do Quality Control and Performance Management, then at some point, we're going to know what's working and what isn't working, or what needs to be addressed collectively, the council and the administration. But unless we get that, have that dialogue, we have those reports, then to me, it's almost like a phantom department that just operates by itself independently, maybe reports to the mayor and to the executive staff, but doesn't report to City Council, who, by the way, funds it. And that's why I had the opinion I have about, is this an area that the council should take control over, so we can get an independent analysis of what's working and what isn't working, just like the Congress receives an independent analysis, independent of politics. I want City Hall to work, and the calls I get every day are about quality... And the calls I get every day are about quality of life issues, city services, that's what I get. And if you go look at my call log today, when I, every time I try to take a break and go in there, that's what I got. City service complaints. So, it's going to be up to the administration to really quantify what this operation does, provide to us quarterly or monthly reports as to what you're doing, what you're assessing, so we can have a better oversight. I mean, I was on the impression when this was set up, that's what this department would do, it'd be an independent, would do independent oversight, would recommend to the mayor, to the administration, to council, this is working, this is not working, this is what you need to address. Again, I'm at a loss of what has transpired here, and so, write today's date and time down, because I, God willing, expect to be here next year. And if there isn't the independent information, if there isn't the reporting, the rubber's going to meet the road. You can't go continue like this. This is what, the third year of this operation, this department? How old is it? To, to, to the, to our comptroller?
To the Chair, the Councilperson, it was created in 2017, and
Oh, that's even better yet. For sure, I'm lost in a fog now. I mean, I mean.
Mr. Chairman, to the Council
Seven years?
Yeah, can, may I, if I can?
Director, I'm going to allow a response, but Councilman, your time is up. Director, I'll allow a response.
Thank you. So, you know, oftentimes, and especially based on, you know, your position over the last five years, I look at the ordinance 6917, and, you know, I think that sometimes we often put words into things that aren't really there, and I wasn't here to, to, to move this legislation through the table, that was not my job at that time. And the office was formed, and was based on ordinance number 6917. And I just want, if you could, Mr. Chairman, to the Councilmen, allow me the opportunity to work with your research staff, to kind of clarify and bring you up to where we are, how we got there, and some of the transitions that occurred, and just in a conversation with your, your council staff, so that you'll know that while some things have not necessarily been transparent, there may be many, many reasons why this department has changed and rebranded itself from the era of city staff, where we were known as a "I got you" crew that came in to do nothing but get you in trouble, to all the way where departments now expect us to come in and help, and feel partnered with us, and helping them achieve their goals. And, you know, please just allow us the opportunity to work with the council staff to kind of show them how we got where we are, and what we look forward to doing in the future.
Thank you, Director, and let me, hold on, let me just, you know, and you know, Director, you know this very well, because you've been in these shoes, I'll go, start at 8:00 AM with a meeting, 9:00 AM committees, go all the way through committees, hit three block clubs, return phone calls, get home at 9:00 o'clock, pop open my computer, and someone posts it on Facebook, "What is our Councilman even doing?", and I'm like, "Oh!", I just, you know, I'm like run ragged. And what I've learned, and you know this better than I do, is that you got to talk about, it's uncomfortable, but you got to talk about what you do. So if there's a disconnect in communication between the administration and council on the productivity or the product, I think that's something that we can work on. But, Councilman, your time is up, do you have any parting comments?
I've stated my comments, I would ask through the staff, did we get a, was it ordinance 6917 that created the?
Yeah, whatever the ordinance.
Did we get a copy of the ordinance?
She's got it.
Okay, if we get a copy.
Madam Clerk, can we make copies of this ordinance, please? Thank you to our clerk.
And so we can have a better understanding when we get into reconciliation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman, you have a specific point, or else I got you back on the list.
Yeah, you know what, you already narrated for me, because where I'm at is that we need to keep this department, it's one of our stronger departments, to the comptroller also, you can measure things, and we need to just work with them. And we'll, we'll see, we'll see, Councilmember Mike Polensick, I'm not into destroying this department, because they're the only ones over there talking about performance-based measurements, and they're measuring things, and that's important for you.
Thank you, Councilman.
All right, thank you very much.
Absolutely. Councilwoman Stephanie House.
Thank you, through the Chair, to the Director. So I was looking at, where did I see it? So I'm looking at page 72, under expenditures, and I was wondering, specifically, computer software, I'm not sure if I'm reading this right, there is a $2,000 budget request for computer software, and I just, I'm wondering if you're doing data monitoring and analytics, like, where is the rationale for that request?
Director?
And it might not be the Director, this might be actually from the Budget Office, whoever put the budget together, whoever is the person who made this request. A, I'm asking that question because it seems very, very low to do data monitoring and analytics, and maybe that is somewhere else. So if you can kind of help me figure that out, that would be helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, to Councilwoman, yeah, it is a low number. Our office was pretty much current in the type of laptops that we have and the work that we do, so some of those purchases were made early on. However, there's always a need to, you know, maintain and back up sometimes some of the pieces and parts that may go along with it, and keeping the maintenance up on those. We always put money in this area because it's the one area that we know we would use. We do have a couple of staff people who have virtual private network access because of the work they do with databases and work over, you know, nighttime. So it's just a way of really discovering us in case we need it. However, we are currently looking at new softwares that we might be able to use to help other departments, now that we have the opportunity to kind of look at data visualization as a major part of, one of the major changes that we'd like to make in our office, and to strengthen a little bit better. We've worked very closely with our GIs, it's become one of our weaknesses at this point, it used to be one of our strips. So these are all part of the discussions that Chief and I have had to talk about how we align ourselves and get back in position to be able to deliver the type of products we know that our office can do, and that what we know our citizens deserve through the priorities of the mayor and our strategy officer.
Just to follow up, through the Chair, to the Director, so on the data monitoring, analytics, and even performance improvement, has any of that work actually helped to look at the, I would say, the way that even the legislative branch maybe even communicates with the executive branch? You see what I'm saying? Because sometimes, we have these systems, and I don't necessarily feel like they are utilized to the best, just here in City Council, and would this department kind of help to look and analyze that, or is that somewhere else? If you can help me with that, that would be appreciated.
We work very closely with departments to help them understand and integrate their systems that they use to collect and track their data. Oftentimes, we order, Exela is one of those systems that everybody uses within the city, because it's able to actually produce a lot of the work that we need in terms of permits, and allows people to go online and gather information. However, the example for our department working with the Division of Fire, integrating a new system that they brought onboard with an existing system, CAD, computer aided dispatches, is an area where our staff was very important in helping them put together the right codes to make those systems basically talk to each other. So yes, we recognize that, we have talked to people in the IT department, and we work very closely with departments that utilize major systems, and continue to work in that effort, and that's one of the areas we're going to strengthen as well. And the systems analyst will help us get there.
Thank you. And then, just a follow-up, so, you know, my thing is, public safety, it's a lot of our budget, and I would, I am looking forward to quality control and performance management to actually have the quality control and performance management of the Department of Public Safety that takes over 50%, 50% of the City of Cleveland's discretionary funds. That is something I hope that this department will be looking at this year, so that they can present in the budget next year, I ain't going to go into it now, but I, that is an expectation that I have, so I'm just putting in my request right now, because again, it needs to be in there. Thank you all very much.
Director, do you want to respond to the Councilwoman's comments on public safety?
Mr. Chairman, to the Councilwoman, I'll wait and take our lead from leadership.
All right, Chief, has that request been noted?
If you have seen our transition report, you will note that rethinking public safety is a major pillar, so we look forward to evaluating that process.
All righty, Councilman, anything else? Okay, any other questions for the Office of Quality Control and Performance Management? Multiple. Councilwoman Gray.
First, good afternoon, Team, well, Department of Quality Control. First, I want to ask my colleague, Councilman McCormick, what did you, you know, did you appoint me to something?
So we, yes, we lost a quorum of the Finance Committee, so the Chair is the discretion to appoint pro temp, so temporary members of Finance, just so that we keep our quorum here as a committee.
Oh, okay.
So you're temporarily a member of the Finance Committee. Congratulations.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you, thank you, thank you, I appreciate it.
The pay is the same. Pay is the same, that is true.
I'm not jumping down for joy, I'm not jumping down for joy. Okay, thank you, that's all I need to say.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. Hearing no other questions, thank you, Director, and to the Office of Quality Control and Performance Management. And I, my mic is off now. For housekeeping, for tomorrow, for everybody here, the council president will kick off tomorrow at 9:00 AM with the Office of the Mayor, followed by Office of Sustainability, followed by the Mayor's Office of Prevention, Intervention, and Opportunity for Youth and Young Adults. Following those sections, we are going to launch into a caucus, which will be the reconciliation caucus for City Council, we'll have an open dialogue, and the council president will be running that, so I am going to punt and defer all questions to him, and appreciate that from that. Councilman Harsh, for the good of the order.
What time do you, is the goal to be done by noon?
Woo, I am, I'm not going to give a timeline, that would be lovely, but, meaning, done with these by noon.
I mean, with these three by noon.
That, that would be lovely, if we could get there, that would be wonderful. Councilman Starr, for the good of the order.
For the good of the order, if you're happy, I'll watch one.
Oh, yes, sir, thank you. So thank you to the Mayor's folks, and we'll see you tomorrow morning. This Committee of Finance, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion is adjourned for today.